Good evening, welcome to the Select Board meeting for Monday, March 14th. Call to order at 6:33 PM. First item in business is discussion regarding the town response to COVID-19. I believe in the last meeting, we extended the face covering mandate for unvaccinated through today, for the discussion today. The COVID counts, if I followed that, are have been zero for two weeks.
Correct.
In Irving.
And I think it was one before that.
Yeah, I think you're right. And very, very low across the reporting counties or towns in the county in that list. Any other comments?
I have no concerns. I will leave it to you.
I had mentioned at the last meeting that I thought the no differentiation between vaccinated and unvaccinated, I would still reiterate that.
Well, I know it was kind of one side, the other side, and the middle, so I kind of figured if nothing's changed, then, you know, I've been weighing it for a couple of weeks as well and following what other communities and, you know, obviously the elementary school, UMass, other organizations have been doing in the area, and so I would move that we lift the mask mandate and leave it as a recommendation for unvaccinated to use face covering, but not a mandate or policy.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Was that, did I hear you?
It was simultaneous.
Only heard one, and I wasn't sure.
We've got our timing down pretty good now.
You're making more challenging for me, I see, okay. So we'll update that guidance to all the staff. Discussion regarding traffic control in Irving Center impacts.
No specific updates, other than we're still waiting on a date to meet with Mastah and their hired engineers for our project. So, no update to provide right now to the public, but as soon as we have those dates, we'll make sure we get them out to folks.
Okay.
So the meet with DOT is just regotting the bridge? What's that conversation about?
We have multiple projects now going on with Mastah, so there is a bridge conversation which has to do with the French King Bridge.
Right, oh, right, right.
And that's been ongoing. This most recent round, Mastah has engaged us in conversations around what to do about the Route 2 concerns, the safety concerns that you have for Irving Center, as well as the Farley stretch. And obviously that will dovetail into the discussion you all will have in a few minutes about the bridge on Church Street. Traffic patterns and construction schedules, all of that.
Okay.
I'm gonna jump around and try to clear some of the smaller topics, and then
Sure.
if we do get into the graded school RFP before seven o'clock before the joint meeting, that's fine, but knowing that's a more in-depth conversation, we'll see if we get the other stuff out of the way.
Okay.
We'll jump down to meeting minutes. Meeting minutes from August 16th, February 28th, and March 5th.
March 5th? Okay.
Yep. Oh, yep.
I make a motion, we accept the meeting minutes of August 16, 2021, as written.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, sir.
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And if nobody has any concerns, I'll make a motion that we approve minutes from February 28th, 2022, and March 5th, 2022, as written.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, I had no concerns with them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Review on the Council of Agent Van Driver Search Process and Appointment Recommendation.
That was a recommendation I was just able to send over this afternoon.
I don't recall the gentleman's name, and I didn't, I didn't see it.
It's in the third paragraph.
Yep.
We only had two that we interviewed, and let's see, I don't, I don't have it, I'd have to go back.
Looked like, was it Peter LaFrance?
Yes, yes, yeah.
And Jennifer Rosenberg?
Right, and our recommendation was for number one, and Jennifer Rosenberg, I believe her last name was. There was a recommendation to bring her on and have her as a, as a second driver with some questions as to how to use her in the future, but to have her go through the training so she's prepared and she's up to speed. We felt that with the one van driver we do have, currently have, and his desire to only work one day a month constituted not having a driver. In effect, having a driver, so we wanted to see some stability with the one and someone as a backup and that knew how to use the, use the van. And she doesn't know how to do either. She's willing to learn.
And if I rewind a couple of years to before the pandemic, we had two, correct?
Right.
They kind of, I don't want to say alternated, but they kind of took shifts as was available or scheduling. And so this would be moving that to three, or, well, one primary and two kind of backups, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, yes.
In theory, a lot, sorry about that, a lot, a lot, obviously, has changed with the pandemic. The, the demand, we believe, will come back until we can have enough staff to guarantee the demand being guaranteed to meet the demand that is put back to Paula and her team. It's been, it's like a chicken and egg moment where you're not sure if you're ready to advertise the service until you know that you've got the staff behind, but at the same point, it's a per diem position. So, how do you guarantee hours until you know? So it takes a while to match that demand and the capacity to what Sukman Benbury is explaining. We had the two before, there's the existing van driver who has reduced his schedule, and there's a question about how much longer he's interested. So we, we may have a need in the near future to, to have somebody trained and ready to go. And I think that's what, what Mr. Benbury is articulating. So it would be, in theory, having three people sort of on deck. The primary driver, who's been our driver for years, a new driver coming onboard to learn the routes and the citizens and their demand, and then a backup to cover holes in the schedule and potentially step up if there was another opening.
And then the, the training that you alluded to, both of you talked of, is that provided by the FRTA? Is that at cost, no cost?
They provide the course, they provide all the training certifications, and they work with Paula to make sure that all of our drivers stay up to date. It's a recertification process in the future. We still have to pay the time of the drivers.
Okay, beyond hours, there's no class cost though, or training costs.
Correct.
So minimal, minimal cost to us to put them onboard as a per diem and have them as needed.
Then that's what I, yeah, it's a pretty low investment if someone's interested in being available and to assist, I mean.
Yeah.
From, from the town cost.
Just reviewing this again. So there is a recommendation. The way it was worded is Peter is the recommendation for the up to 19 and a half. Now, just for clarification, they would both be hired as per diem up to
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed 19 and a half. So they're both classified the same, it's not one that's guaranteed 19 and a half, correct?
Correct. Again, we may, depending on how demand goes, as we relaunch the service, we may come back to you and say, demand has been very strong. How do you want to handle that? But we wouldn't go past the 19 and a half without talking to the three of you first.
And this is a at-will, there's no, it's not for a term, correct?
Correct, at-will.
And there was no recommendation for rate listed in here, I know it was advertised for around anticipated 15, correct?
Correct, which is step one of grade A on our comp schedule.
Okay.
I don't have any other questions or any concerns with the recommendation myself.
I'd ask Bill, he made the recommendation, so.
I, no. I have, I have no concerns, I, I can tell you that the committee did talk about the maybe at some point talk if, if activity increases to the level that we anticipate that it will once, once COVID is clearly, people aren't that worried about it. We see no reason why it won't be the way it was before. So the activity will be there, and we had this, a discussion about us talking to FRT about possibly acquiring a second van because there are some towns that do have a second van. And if we, if we have the, the time and, and the the activity to, to be able to use that, that would benefit the town as well. And the program that FRTA is looking for people to step into, Paula suggested that, that she may be interested at a future date.
Yeah, I think I remember some stuff about that program, something a little more involved and a little more complex. But when we get to a higher level, it may
Right.
a volume, it may make sense, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Would either of you like to make a motion on that?
Yeah, I'm just making sure I got.
All the pieces?
Yeah, the pieces you need. Still go, we still have to go through all of the
Get the core checks.
Yeah, background checks, you know.
Pre-employment screening?
Yeah.
Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, thank you, I was, my brain was not letting me come up with that phrase.
The more concise version of the, of the details.
All right, so I will make a motion that we appoint Peter LaFrance and Jennifer Rosenberg as per diem van drivers. Not to exceed 19.5 hours per week at step one, grade A. Pending completion of all pre-employment screening and any documentation needed to be done by human resources. What, effective date, what do you want for an effective date? Give a couple of weeks? Two weeks? So that puts us at the 28th?
Yeah, I know that they've been following up, they're eager to know a decision, so.
Okay.
If I need an extension, I can let you know.
Effective date, hire date of 3/28 22.
Second.
At-will.
Oh, yes, thank you, we did say that, and that's an at-will appointment.
Second.
You were going through that, and it raised a question that just left my brain as quick as it came. Do we need to put a clause for successful, successful completion of the required training or certifications?
You mean continued employment?
Yeah, or, or by a certain time.
You, you actually could.
Where it has specific requirements.
Some of the other jobs that are required, that you've given the six-month or, or three-month, depending on the type of certification, the duration it takes to achieve it.
I would recommend six months. Only because there was some discussion about the training, and some of the training is online training. And it appeared that there was no problem doing the online training, but scheduling the other training on hands, driving and defensive driving and, and learning how the van works is, is at someone else's discretion as to when that time happens and that timeframe happens. And the CPR training is, that's required as well and some other training, so it may take a little bit of time for people to complete all of it.
Right. So do we want to add something like continued employment?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'll just do a friendly amendment, Bill, if you're all right with that, and you can, you know, resecond if you'd like to, but a final line on that would be continued employment will be contingent on successful completion of all training and certifications needed within six months from date of hire.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for that.
Yeah. I just, it was the driver's training thing that I heard that I was thinking we should include that.
Just to kind of vote on the full motion. Just voted on the amendment.
That's fair.
All those in favor of the full motion?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Review of the FY 20, FY 21 Community Development Block Grant. It was.
So you all agreed to apply for the FY 21 CDBG grant program with the Housing Authority. We were doing this in partnership with the towns of Warwick and Northfield, and this was to relaunch a similar program that you've done in the past, which is the housing rehab loan program. So you were successful, you've been awarded just over $900,000 for the administration and to conduct the program. This would be a vote to accept that fund and to authorize the chair as the chief executive to sign off on all documents. That would at least get the contractual obligations with the state underway. And then we would be able to start working with the Housing Authority to conduct the legal ad, they have to announce that the monies have been awarded. And they've already started to reach out to people who had initially shown interest last year when you approved the application, to see if they're still interested, if they want to move forward. So, we're hoping to launch this program in the next few months.
This is primarily focused on housing rehab through the joint towns.
Correct.
Right, it's Irving was the lead town, but
Correct.
What were the other towns? It's not the 10, it's the
Yeah, you have several properties.
We have a few of these, I'm like trying to just draw on which towns it was.
This would be Northfield and Warwick.
Northfield and Warwick, okay.
Yes.
And the Housing Authority would assist and administer?
Correct.
Okay. What is the timeline on the use of money?
I was just looking at that, if there's an end. I didn't see it in the, in the letter from
The award letter?
Yeah.
From the undersecretary at D H C D, the Housing and Community Development, I didn't see it either.
Yeah. But let me look at the actual grant, the contract, I mean.
June 30, 2025, that midway down page one, is that?
Yeah.
Am I right in that contract end date? Right above the certifications?
June 30th? Yeah.
That's what I'm seeing, yeah, so. Any other questions or concerns on it?
I don't know.
Make a motion to accept the grant from the Community Development Block Grant issued through the Department of Housing in the amount of $928,267. That grant will run through June 30th, 2025, and I'll authorize Chair to be the signatory on that and execute all agreements.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We just got the final one, so it's probably not in the box yet, is it?
I remember it printed tonight.
Okay. Discussion regarding 2022 Almost Anything Goes collection. Mr. McCray, would you like to join us?
No, it's not involved with the meeting, we're all following.
Can't tell that was fun than our meeting.
What's that?
So I can't tell if that's more fun than the meeting we had.
That depends on how long it goes.
So very few changes are recommended. It's predominantly the structure that you've had in past years. Last year, you made a change operationally where you contracted Casella to do the actual collection. And that went fairly successfully last year. So we would like to recommend to the three of you that we do that again, and Casella has come forward and, and has explained that they would like to, to take on the full operation again. We would still go ahead and, and tag items that shouldn't be collected and, and work with the team, so it's not like they'd be out there by themselves. They can start right on May 2nd, like we traditionally would. And so I put together a draft flyer, the only correction or the suggested edits I've made are unread. It was to just bring more attention to the piles. We have some residents in town who commingle their materials, and it makes it really hard for the collectors on the curb to try to sort that material. Some things like metal cannot go in the dumpster, they have to be separated out as a wastebank item. So we need the, the residents to help do some of that self-sorting, so I've tried to bring that a little bit more into a prominent place. The only other suggested edits were to be a little clearer about what construction debris is, we still had a lot of on the street, on the side, trying to negotiate what's the definition of construction debris. So I, my suggestion is to add some examples, like sheet rock, like tile, like framing, like things you would assume somebody solves all down their house. And the other issue that I remember coming up last year was scrap wood. We take wood, it's not necessarily bad to have that, but there needs to be some dimensional limitations, otherwise it can't go in the compacting truck. So I suggested four feet, I'm sure we could figure out a length that you all agree with, but I know in past years, we've had full fence panels enlarged. And that obviously will not go in the, the compactor, and the crew, it's, that's an unrealistic expectation of the crews. There's just reloading trucks, they can't be disassembling materials on the side of the road like that.
Yeah, I think four foot has been mentioned in previous years as a limit.
I think it was 10 foot was the, the length of something, but, you know, look at stockade fence, you know, you got 32 square foot.
Yeah.
You know, of it, or 64 square feet of it, you know, it doesn't fit in the back of the compactor very well.
I think we've had some almost entire fence piles. Not pieces, but the whole.
That's the way people put it out.
The whole width of it, right, yeah. In terms of funding, anyway, the line item for it, do does Casella provide a quote, or is this just on basically time, material, time and wait? Right, yeah, okay, I couldn't, I just didn't recall.
Right.
Okay.
They, the way that they structured it last year, and it sounds like they want to do it again, it'd be a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, a single truck would be in town doing the collection. Thursday and Friday, they'd be doing residential collection for us in Gil. So they would take a pause, and then on Saturday, they would return with four trucks and complete the town. And that's similar to what they did last year, it seemed to work, they were able to complete the task in one week like we asked. But to your point, depending on what the citizens put out for collection, it could drive whether more trucks are needed or additional routes are necessary.
Hopefully last year would have been a bigger year than we'd see this year because we hadn't done it in a couple of years, so it wouldn't be longer or heavier than last time.
I guess that goes back to Brian's concern of what's going to be allowed for demolition, scrap wood. So many remodels of kitchens, we've had full kitchens out there, cabinets all knocked down.
That came to mind when I was reading the sheet rock tile framing, I was like, entire rooms, how do you, how do you quantify that? I mean, are we saying someone can't throw out a two-foot piece of sheet rock if they patch something, or are we saying, you know, and I, and I don't think that's what we mean, but we don't want to see entire rooms and houses on the curb either.
Yeah, I think what you're getting at, and we had a, a few years ago, there was an entire kitchen remodel, the, the entire kitchen was out there, every cabinet, the sink, you name it, was put on the side. Not broken down, just in full, full usable structure just sitting there. In order to capture all of that, that would be a very long list of what's not accepted, so we have to
Well, it pretty much comes down to demolition, if it's fastened to something, that's demo, if you, if you look at it that way. We probably, there's probably over 100 toilets picked up every year. You know, it's a fastened thing, toilets, you know, they, they have weight to them, they're, they're small, they crush up, but it's a fastened item, so demolition can go many different ways.
So Glenn, would you have a problem with cabinets if, if after they were taken down, they, someone took, went to them with a sledgehammer and broke them into
Little pieces, so it's more for them to be collected?
Yeah.
It's, I, I really don't know, you know, it's going to crush them in the truck, they're easier to handle as their whole than it is a bunch of pieces. There was a house last year that had, it was almost a compactor full of slats that they demoed the plaster off from the walls in their house, and had a pile of slats out there with all the little nails in them that, and then the people stuck around with rakes and shovels to pick everything up afterwards. And also, you have big cabinets, you have a big pile of slats and, and broke stuff, it takes more time. I, I just, I think that the, the definition of demolition allowed and not allowed, I think, is going to be the key. And unfortunately, people are going to read it wrong, and there's going to be piles left over afterwards, and then it's going to be, what do we do now?
So just on that point, last year, we walked door to door in some neighborhoods and other neighborhoods when a pile was left, we, we went and spoke to every one of the residents that there was an issue for. Some were misunderstanding, some, they had not read instructions. As soon as we pointed out to them that we couldn't take the item that was listed right there, most people were amenable. Some people poured loose trash on the ground and then expected that one of us were coming to pick it up. So, that's more the exception, that's not necessarily what we are experiencing everywhere, but I think the clearer we can be to Glenn's point on this, we're not going to catch it all, we can't, there's no way to get an exhaustive list, but some of the most challenging collections that we've had, I mean, last year, we had, I think, a dismantled shed, or maybe more of a garage-type structure, and pieces of that were coming out to the curb. And so, we had to clarify that we couldn't take your down-to-garage. So, I think anything that we can do to offer more context and clarity helps when we go out and talk to people. So I think anything that we can do to offer more context and clarity helps when we go out and talk to people.
Am I correct in saying that the bylaw states that if, if you're, if you're doing any type of demo, you need a building permit?
A demolition permit.
Right.
Correct.
So to me, I mean, I, I did a lot of demo that my contractor didn't do. But I hired a dumpster afterwards and put it all in it.
Some towns have actually said that. They, they would say, anything that's considered construction debris or demolition, they would say, that should be a responsibility of the demolition contractor that you hired or your vendor. And they should be providing you with a dumpster. Just a reminder that you're probably paying for that service. It shouldn't be on the curb as an additional charge or an additional thing you're doing. If you've already brought somebody into your home, they likely, that was part of the bill of service. To Glenn's point, I don't know why we see as much on the, on the curb side of house materials.
Because they don't have to pay for a dumpster if they're doing the work themselves.
Yeah, if they're not doing it themselves.
But they still need a building permit in order to do the work.
The right way is.
So I, I, I would feel that if you need a build, in the beginning, if you need a building permit in order to do the work, then you need to be providing a dumpster for it. And, and we should maybe be saying that for, for those types of things.
So I've also heard that you actually need a permit to change out toilets and vanities also. I mean, a lot of homeowners do it themselves, but it's a plumbing fixture. When you have to undo any plumbing, it requires a permit also.
Yeah, and you know, I mean, let's be honest, you're, you're not going to be able to enforce those type of home remodel projects. Somebody wants to swap out a new toilet, their toilet breaks. They're not going to the town to ask for a permit to be able to put in a new toilet on a Friday afternoon when their toilet's broken. They're just going to go fix it. And that's the way, and, and nobody's going to be any the wiser. It's been going on for forever.
Until May 2nd.
Until we see them all on the side of the road. I, I think, you know, just if there's problematic items that we can expand under construction debris, getting some feedback, some more feedback. So, you know, the occasional toilet, yes, no. You know, if somebody is hoarding eight of them, you know, because they're a contractor and didn't want to pay.
Don't laugh, that's happened.
That's why I bring it up. Because I've been, I've been in town long enough to see when I'm driving around saying, that's not a homeowner that swapped out their toilet. They have six of them. They, I know them, they have one bath in their house. So I'm not sure where the other five came from.
It's bears.
Right.
Find a better quality one.
So I'm just trying to figure out language of how to, what to add to that, to be a little bit clearer. So that when those follow-up conversations happen about, we're not taking this, pull it back, or make other arrangements, you know, with us.
The only piece I keep coming back to, and I think, you know, the scrap wood up to four foot in length, we better put a width if you're going to do that. Because I have a four-foot fence, but it's eight foot wide. You know, so.
Dimensions are fine.
What, what, you know, let's put two dimensions on that one, that's just maybe an easy one. I always kind of think of volume because at the end of the day, I agree with you. Toilets are just going to get changed. Small things are just going to get changed depending on the homeowner. And that's, is what it is. And policing that is not something that I want to try to even approach. So do we accept that on that small scale? And then how do we define the difference in scale? Is it volume? Is it overall, you know, like your pile better, shouldn't be that large of that sort of thing, you know? And is that, and how do we put that in words that's very clear? Because I also don't want to sit here and say, we will take some construction debris. That's not the goal.
Right.
But, you know, if you have one cabinet, are we going to not take that? Especially if you've made it a flat pile of four pieces, I mean, and a door. I don't think that's what we're trying to do, right? It's, it's, it's 10 feet of cabinets from both walls that it's, with the wall still attached that we're concerned about, you know, that kind of thing, so.
Yeah, when you look at cabinets, kitchen cabinets versus some bureaus, we've picked up some bureaus that are eight and 10 feet long also. It's not affixed to your house, you know, it's, it's, that's a scrap wood type thing that, that I would see. You know, no problem taking those.
Right, because it falls under bulky furniture.
Right.
You know, chairs, tables, couches, couches are, you know, bigger than four foot.
So which brings us up to that, is the sleeper sofas are not actually supposed to go in the compactors also? Because that falls under the metal.
Falls under what?
Under the metal, because they're full of metal in them.
I figured you were going to tell me it fell under mattress because of the sleeper.
It's the same idea in terms of the mattresses we don't take is because of the metal. They need to be sorted out and put somewhere else.
I thought it was the health hazard, but okay.
That's unpleasant too, but the issue.
And there's a fee to those.
Right, the metal doesn't compact and it needs to be sorted somewhere else. It's a waste ban item. So, and that, and again, that was a, maybe something we weren't as clear with our vendors in the past. That was brought to our attention. We're going to be intentionally clearer with folks about that. So maybe I can clarify that if they do the, the couch, they have to somehow take out the sleeper portion of it. The metal component has to come out. I don't know who's going to want to do that, but if they would like it taken, the couch can go, but we may not be able to take the sleeper portion.
Yeah, maybe in the bulky furniture, maybe you add a line without couch. You take the couches out and put another line that says, you know, couch, sleepers require, must be removed first or are not allowed. I don't know. But on the cannot be accepted side. That thought just left my mind. There was something I was thinking at the top that was, we could put ahead of all that, but it's not, go ahead.
On that topic, it may not be what you were going to refer to, but there's some items on there that it says we don't take. Clearly, we take them down at the, at the yard. So this is usually printed in the around town, right next to the flyer that says, all of these items can be brought to the yard. Which ones are free, which ones have a small cost associated with them? So folks know what to do. So if they see it here that we can't take it on the curb, they will then immediately have the guidance of, where can I bring this? We take most of the stuff.
Help me remember. I was wondering, should we start on the cannot accepted side with another line that says something to, to the point of? We do not accept, we will not accept excessive quantities of any item. From, you know, that, and I don't know if you want to say more than a single household, because not, maybe that's not the idea, but just something to say, you know, excessive unreasonable quantities of any item may not be accepted at the discretion of the collection team. Just to, is that a way to get there? Because I think, you know, this whole construction debris stuff, and we've had those conversations before, or the stack of, you know, 20 fence panels. It's not scrap wood. That's, that's, I mean, to me, you, you need a dumpster. You should be, that's something you should be handling differently. I guess that's what I'm trying to say there. So do, is that a way maybe to clarify to allow just some? I don't want us to have, we're not looking for unreasonable discretion. We're looking for reasonable discretion to say that's, that pile's not, not the point of this. But it's, it's hard to quantify that, so I don't know if there's a, a better way. I don't know if that's the right way, but I can try to clarify that.
So one suggestion, and Glenn, don't hate me on this one.
I don't hate anybody.
Because we are going to try and get a little more stringent on what we'll accept and what we won't. Rather than after the fact of telling somebody, this is why we didn't take it. Is there a way that we could put your contact info on there? Not for the illegal dumping. That is still the police. But if they have questions of, I want to put out, I did a kitchen remodel. And before I, before I haul it all out there to the side of the curb, can they just call and say, I'm thinking about putting this out? Because if, if they have that resource available, if you have any questions about items you intend to put out, call and ask first. And at least then, if they have that resource available and they choose not to do it, and they choose not to call, and they just assume it's going to be okay, and they put it out. And then we sticker it and say, not taking it. That's on them at that point. They didn't bother to even call and ask.
Yep, that's fine.
You know, that way, there's those questionable, because there are all those questionable items, you know?
Yeah.
You know, and, and maybe it's just if you have specific items to the area of what can and cannot be accepted, please call. And that, you know, I don't know how many calls you'll get, but.
I usually get a fair amount anyways. There actually are quite a few people that call asking if it's okay to put stuff out.
Maybe on the can be accepted side, you can just add, you know, if, if you are not clear on something on this, that you have that is not where it belongs on this list, please call. And we'll help you understand where it fits.
Because a lot of these, it's really hard to articulate exactly what you're talking about. You know, if somebody says, I see sheet rock. I had a hole and I did, you know, a scrap piece that's two foot by two foot. Do I have to go to the dump with that? Or, you know, a simple question like that, or I've got 80 sheets that I, that were broken.
No.
That's a little different, you know?
Usually every year, there's a few houses with like a house full of windows also.
Yeah.
They've changed out all their windows. They're all out.
And, and one part that I always struggle with this is, no, we don't want, that's not the purpose of the program. But at the same time, we all know that people come and take things from the piles that can be reused and recycled and things like that. So, you know, I, I, I do think sometimes the piles you see are people thinking that there may be someone who's going to come along and take that bank of cabinets. Because they're not broken and they can be used, or, or those windows for another project and so.
You can tell that how they put them out there.
Absolutely, absolutely agree. The carefully, you know, set out there versus the.
I mean, I can tell you, I've done that exact same thing, where I've put a few items out there that I know are not eligible to be picked up in hopes that somebody will take them. And then, you know, hopefully I remember and prior to the start of the event, to go pull them back out and say, oh, nobody took them for free. They're still mine. I still have to deal with them.
So another fin comes waiting in. Patiently, appreciate that. Are we at a point where we want to just kind of maybe revisit the couple of things we want to change and good with it? Or do we want to come back to it?
I think I'm good with it. I think just, you know, giving the leeway if there's any additional changes that we've already talked about. And then adding the contact way. Even if it's easier for email, you know, respond to emails, whatever works for you.
Either way is fine.
Yeah, I think those, those small changes, I'd be fine with it.
I'm good.
Okay.
So we'll make the changes in the issue?
Make it so.
Yeah.
All right, awesome. Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you all.
Okay. It is 7:14, and I will call the joint meeting with the finance committee to order. If you all would come up and join us. Thank you for your patience. Very critical item of business beforehand we had to cover. So we'll start off with FY '23 budget request items. There's a few open items for discussion. Apologize, I did not bring up all of my packet here for that. So I guess I'll start with the first one was for the police department. The capital planning committee reviewed a request around the watch guard camera system, which covers both the cruisers and the body cameras. And there was a proposal from Chief Holst for both either purchasing new server, all new cameras, et cetera, or to lease them on a five-year lease. And after discussion with the capital planning committee, they voted to recommend that we move to leasing rather than a purchase program. And put them in operating budget as opposed to capital budget. The Chief Holst couldn't be here tonight, and we didn't cover it last meeting. So I said I would fill in and if there's any questions I can't answer, we can get some further detail from him. But I can pull up the numbers here in a moment. Generally, I want to say the purchase was around $80,000. And the leasing was around $15,000 a year on a five-year lease, which came out to about 75. So it was, it was very close to the same total cost over the five years. That will be slightly higher with the addition of another cruiser. That will be one additional cruiser camera that was not in that original quote. So I think it was closer to $17,000 annually, roughly. I'll pull up the, if I have the exact numbers, but we were waiting on a quote for the revisal.
So you, you mentioned five years. Is that the anticipated lifespan or?
So that's a good question, you know? I think often we've run technology longer than that, but it does change. The body cameras we have now, I think half of them were bought with a grant. And then a few years later, we got the other half with another grant. The cruiser cameras, we often have moved from cruiser to cruiser. So those are probably even older. See if I have the details on the age. So the, the other piece to this, maybe just, and from the technology side, that's kind of where I'm helping with this. The leasing, everything's on, I believe it's a next day replacement.
Okay.
If something breaks accidental, you know, whatever it is, I believe that's fully covered for the five years. All of the storage of the footage, management of that, you know, space, all of that's included in the contract and it's cloud stored. So it's managed on servers by Motorola. I think Motorola owns them now. As opposed to the purchase option where we would own the equipment. And I think we did, that did include the pricing for a five-year warranty in that $80,000 quote. But it's also a physical server or two on site. It's all the infrastructure on site, and that would have to be managed and maintained by the town. There are support services, but after five years, we'd have to renew all those support services. And, you know, we know technology, especially computers and things, that five, you know, plus years, you start getting to a point where they need to be replaced often anyway. We've already had to do service and or replace the watch guard server, server once in the time that we've had it. So it, it, it can be a coin toss on which way you go with technology. I'm seeing more of places leaning to leasing because the life cycle is shorter on technology and the change happens so quickly. That taking that and just planning for it every year becomes a constant. Instead of, you know, outlaying $80,000 every, I don't know how many years, and, and where has that put you? It takes some of the burden too off of the department from having to administer that right now. They just call somebody and say, it's not working, come fix it or replace it. And they'll just send them a replacement. Whereas now, it's a fair amount of in-house troubleshooting and then maybe spending time on the phone and trying to get that support. So there's definitely pros and cons in both sides of it, but. Personally, I, I lean towards the de-leasing as, as the, probably the better solution for this. And I think the other concern is with post and some of the requirements around that and around, you know, what they're going to expect departments to have for cameras. We're, we're ahead of the curve and we have been. But, you know, the quality of our equipment is not as good as what's out today. It will likely need to be upgraded in the next year or so if we don't, one way or another. So we'll either be outlaying that in the next, you know, 12 to 18 months, or we'll go to leasing. So I think one or the other, we probably have to make a decision to do it if we don't do it this year, next year. That was long-winded, but, you know, any questions or thoughts about, about it?
So, so you're saying that there's a savings of about 5,000 or?
I, no, I think it's actually 5,000 more, right? If you said 17.
Can I have it backwards?
You said it was 17.
Let me open the actual numbers. The 17 is the additional cruiser.
Okay.
The original quotes, I believe, were 75 and 80. And I believe the 75 was leasing and the 80 was purchased.
Okay.
Both with a, you know, the lease over five years and purchasing with five-year warranties, five-year service, five-year contracts.
I mean, either way, you're, whether it's a, a swing of five up or down, I would prefer the leasing. I know for the same, I'm not going to reiterate everything you said, but for the same reasons, IT needs change frequently. And availability changes frequently. I know the school does a lease with all of their iPads and computers. They run it on a four-year or five, four-year lease, I believe, for the same reasons. They made that change several years ago because of IT. So I have no concerns with doing that.
So I did just find the original quote. This was without the additional cruiser. The purchase was $82,400. And the video as a service lease was 75,820, so about a $4,500 less over the same period, which was an annual cost of 15,100. There's a $350 upfront cost in addition. I don't think I have the exact number on what the additional cruiser cost was. I think we estimated it to be about $2,000 and that's where the 17 came in. So that's adding that fifth cruiser that's on the capital plan to give it a watch guard system as well.
Right, and that's the number I was using, you know.
Yeah, where you got above the 80s. Yeah, yeah.
But it's still, but they bumped it up to 85, you know, over a five year. So the additional cruiser is minimal.
Yep. So I guess if the if the board and the FinCom is in support of moving it to an operating cost and leasing it, then the question is, do we do it this year or next year? I don't think we can wait longer than that, most likely. We've had some failures and issues with some of the body cameras and and some of the technology we already have. The issue of having an additional cruiser, if we chose not to do watch guard in FY '23 and waited to FY '24, Chief didn't feel like it made sense to spend what's probably $3,000 or $4,000 to purchase a watch guard system for the additional cruiser of the old technology, just to replace it in a year.
Right.
And would likely, I believe his plan would be to have the Chief's vehicle of not have the in cruiser. And he has about, it would have a body camera that can be used, you know, as needed. So that would get him through that one year and then we would install it after. If we if we did, if we do end up having the additional cruiser approved and was in place before we do the watch guard lease.
I would be in favor of putting it in this year, provided availability of funding. And so when we get into the full ATM on where we stand and we look at what the capital improvement, you know, what those requests are going to be in that budget is right now, there's nothing in there in the ATM portions. We're going to discuss it in a few. If we have the capacity to put it in there, I would, I'd be in favor of doing it this year.
I agree.
I agree to do this.
Okay. Brian, we'll have to confirm with Chief. He was waiting on an updated quote with the additional cruiser. Okay, I know we estimated it to be about $11,000 over the five years, so about $20,000 additional per year. So just as a placeholder, I think 17.3 should be probably a good number, but we can vet that. After. And then obviously, any of the prior equipment that is still in good working order, we can, you know, potentially offer, if we choose to surplus it and make it available and put it out for bid or for other communities that are looking to add it that have the older equipment still or, you know, there might be some value to that too to offset the first year. The next item that we had on our list was the financial software, so whether or not to upgrade that in FY '23. And the financial team had been looking at that and moving it to a different, maybe more robust cloud infrastructure than what we have today. So that's, that was kind of out there, knowing some of the discussions of whether or not the annual cost for the financial software needed to go up and were we going to do anything there? Jennifer's here tonight to help discuss that. We do have numbers on that and in discussion with Jennifer and Brian, I think we believe we have the capacity to to do that and the interest to move forward in that direction. You're welcome coming up. Doing that would also require some additional time in treasurer's office to, you know, take the lead on training and migration and those sort of things over at least the first year. So that could potentially be a increase in salary wages for that department as well as the conversion cost, which is about $22,000, I think.
So to the treasurer, what is this software going to do for the office?
Lots of wonderful things. I guess I'll focus on the the employee side. There's going to be like an employee portal. So people can check their time off, their time requests, their accrued time, they can sign up for health insurance benefits, dental. It's it's very, very self-serve. They can log their time. It's going to be quite efficient, I believe, for for the whole whole town operation as far as payroll goes. And the vendor warrant as well. So Deb won't have to input everything. People will create their own work orders, send them to her and she'll just basically verify them. So I think it's a lot of time-saving as well.
Did you say a number on cost?
I kind of did, but I didn't have it in front of me, so I didn't say it loudly, so in case it was wrong. You may have those in front of you. I know we have them in here, so I haven't pulled it up yet.
The ones that you just sent, yeah.
Yeah.
There's no reason my phone is stuck.
So it's a, just to clarify, the software that we're looking at is this owned by the same company that we're currently with. So it would be a migration within the same larger structure as opposed to going to a completely new vendor. So there's, even though there's a cost with migrating, it's not as exorbitant of a cost because they're not taking all of our data into a new system and trying to shoehorn it in. So they are telling us that the cost to transition, and this would now be cloud-based, our current system is is on the server. We had to move it to their server and we remote desktop into it, which is not cloud-based.
It's not really cloud. It's not here, but it's not cloud.
It's working, but it's not ideal. No.
It's clunky.
It got us off our server. But the cost to do that migration is 23,400.
And the reporting is amazing as well. I mean, should be able to pull up our report, we have to get really creative in the treasurer's office to be able to pull up anything, any sort of like salary history, reprint checks, any any sort of data that we need to provide. We make it work, but it would be wonderful to to be able to have this.
It would also just be a change on the operating cost. We're currently in the software subscription is in Debbie's budget in the accounting office. So there's currently an appropriation plan for FY '23 of just over $14,000 for that software. It would change our annual subscription to 21.7. So it's an increase of about $7,000.
So upfront 23.4 and then annual 7.7.
In addition to what we're currently paying.
Correct. Yep. The reason I asked for that is that, you know, just the very brief overview that you gave of the functions of the new program, sounds like you will save time on task just tremendous, you know, for for all departments, for all employees that aren't doing these very old-school, pen and paper, time-on-task needs that we have and a couple of clicks and it's done. Sounds a lot better use of our staff's time all around.
Coming from private sector who, you know, everything's like that, you know, time clocks, biometrics, everything. It's it's so much more efficient.
Yeah.
You know, manage your sign-offs, your time is logged. I mean, right now, we're in spreadsheets, right?
Yep.
Hand-done, not even, I should say, hand-done sheets that then end up in spreadsheets.
Correct.
All of the scanning and manual, you know, creation of warrants and everything that's done by all the department heads. They can do that at their fingertips and, you know, from from their desk. Put it in and then it's just being validated and moved electronically. And then reporting, I know even in the budget process, getting something out for what we're doing right here for all of us for the operating budget is, yeah, difficult. So so that that side of it would be much easier too. Some of us looked with, yeah, one second. We also looked at, they have some capital planning piece that they're looking at that that's kind of newer that they've maybe bought or bolted on. And so we didn't really validate that yet in terms of what it could do and how well it would integrate, but that may be a future step in a future year to help our capital team as well. So kind of looking more holistically. So, Ben, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, does the product have its own reporting tool or does it have, do you have to purchase Crystal Reports or something like that that goes along with it or?
Did they buy or did they partnered with Tableau? Either way, are you familiar with Tableau? Yeah, that's what they use. So, yeah, exactly.
I don't know what it means, so.
Yeah, it's awesome.
It's like Excel in the cloud on steroids.
They showed me what it can produce and that is exactly what I would love to be able to give to our department heads and our citizens so that they can interpret the budgets and the the reports that we're trying to explain to people. I know nothing about the backend of how that works, but I'm told that it's powerful.
Yeah, the dashboard in four is very good.
Yeah.
But it's Tableau, yeah. So I figured you would know that name and I do and it is, yeah. Visualizing our our data and our information is, yeah, I'm a geek, you know.
Listen, it's not my forte. I I dabble with it, but when there's a few people on the, you know, boards that understand it and are giving it high praise, I'm going to defer to those two and say, absolutely. I think it's money well spent. It's not a, it's not a huge dollar amount to migrate it and the increase on the annual operating doesn't seem to be, you know, if you're looking over time, 7,700 a year to be able to maintain that doesn't seem like a lot.
The other piece is where does the 23.4 come from? And so in some discussion, you know, obviously, the best time to change these kind of things is in fiscal year, change, you know, at the fiscal year. So one proposal that first to the board, if you're interested in proposing to the FinCom would be, do we put the 23.400 implementation cost into a reserve fund transfer request to FinCom to potentially kick that off by the end of the month? And believe the financial team believes that they could between April 1st and June 30 be ready to cut over.
And have everything migrated and ready and or?
Migrated and ready to cut over. I'm sure it will be a year of learning and training and hence the 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 other piece, which is, you know, the the wages in the treasurer's office to help support that through the through the next year, increased time needed. So, but that that's a proposed way to do it sooner. Otherwise, you know, we don't have funding until July 1. Then it's a planning of when do we do it? Do we wait a whole nother year or do we do it sometime mid-year, which could be pretty messy.
We haven't tapped into any of those reserve funds yet, have we?
I think so.
I'll just say I met with Jennifer on Friday to discuss this. I would support doing a reserve fund. I think her reasoning for wanting to get it done for the fiscal year makes a lot of sense. So I think if you gentlemen are in favor of it and if you gentlemen have any thoughts you'd like to share, I I just think it makes sense so she can get moving on it.
I have no concerns, so.
I don't have a concern with using it as long as we're not, I don't remember having any conversations of any other items that were potential for reserve funds. So this would be the only item. Still leave us over half of what we have there in case something comes up.
Yeah, we've only got three months left.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So it makes sense to me.
Before we do that, it sounded like no concerns about moving forward with the project, supporting the project, funding the project and the long-term costs. And quantify the the change in the treasurer's budget while we're.
It would be five extra hours a week at at my salary. It's 38.08 per hour. And so that would equate to $9,938.88 additional to the salary.
10,000, oh. It's elected, it can't be rounded. I was thinking it's 10, but it's an elected official compensation, so it does need to be that exact. But big picture, it's 10.
I would be learning the product and teaching everybody too as well, to be able to go to each department and train them and get it up and running. Learn it myself.
So that's a 7,000 in the accounting, accountants budget. It's 10,000 in treasurer's budget. That's our that's our rough 17,000 annual operating cost increase, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the 23 would be one time.
Well, the 23 is one time, the 17 increases for one fiscal year.
Right, that's the FY '23 operating cost increase. I'm sure there's an escalator in there that will probably go up slightly every year.
Well, no, what I'm saying is that extra five hours is one fiscal year. I can't imagine if we need a second fiscal year to learn the program, then it maybe is not the right program.
Deliver what we were hoping for. Right, no, no.
If we're still trying to learn the program after a year, then maybe we purchased the wrong program. So that's what I meant by that.
Fair point, fair point.
The ongoing after FY '23 should be about, you know, 7,700, 8,000, somewhere in that, you know, ongoing elevated cost.
Yeah, I don't recall what they, they have some price escalator in their software contract. I think it's not to exceed 5% or 7% annually, but that's pretty standard, so.
Yep.
Any concerns from finance committee on any of that? I'll make a motion. We submit a reserve fund transfer request to the finance committee in the amount of 23,400 for professional services for migration from our current system, Springbrook, to Springbrook's cloud system. I'm stumbling over the before and after, but anyway, that's that's the.
Got everything you need on that? All right, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have that ready, Brian, for FinCom?
If FinCom takes a vote, I can print it up.
Okay. So it's officially submitted to the three of you. If you have any questions on our request.
I'd like to, I think all the board views for this. It's for professional services, right? Primarily would be the.
Correct. For migration, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the proposal from the Board of Selectmen for the additional funding for professional services of somewhere around 23.
23,400.
23,400.
From the reserve.
From the reserve.
And authorize your chair to sign it.
And authorize my chair to sign it.
And I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is that good? Okay.
Perfect.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Jen, what portion of of your office is cloud-based now currently?
The Springbrook is, it is cloud-based, I believe.
It's it's a remote server, it's not cloud.
Maybe Jake would be able to answer that better.
The primary software they use is, it used to be on our onsite server. We wanted to move away from having a local server, so Springbrook put it on a server that they manage. But it's not really in the cloud.
Okay.
Which makes it a bit clunky, for lack of a more technical term, in how you interact and move files and use the system.
Yes, you have a really long pathway to get something out of the system that you need a cheat sheet for.
The 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 true cloud system we're moving to would be like, you know, using your web, your email on the web or browsing a website. It's very, very dynamic, very quick.
So that's the the goal is to reach that point?
Yes.
Yes.
That's what this will do.
This is the start.
This is, this is the end.
This is the end.
This is to get to there.
Okay.
This is the from here to there.
And we can phase it, but once it's in the cloud and because it's not user-based in terms of the the licensing, right now, we're limited to the number of licenses that we have and how many people can access it. So five of us have access. Every employee that is comfortable using it and wants to navigate it will have the ability to log in, manage what they have the permission level to see and take care of. So the expansion of just the access of the data, like right now, just to request a report, physical request has to be made of a person who has to be in that day to then generate the report that's in the back when the employee could just be empowered to log in and do it themselves. So having that cloud. So, having that cloud-based option, even if it's read-only, is pretty powerful. But that then involves the training, to get people comfortable enough to use it in that way.
Would I be correct in assuming that the July 1 plan would be just to get us from where we are to the matching state in the cloud, in the new software? And then, the further rolling out to different departments and employee self-service and all that would be throughout the next fiscal year? Is that kind of high-level thinking?
That's what I had imagined, yes.
So, I think it would probably be training and deployment for the rest of the departments that haven't historically used it before over the next fiscal year, once it's in place. So, hopefully, that end state, fully in the cloud, everyone empowered and utilizing it, you know, themselves is this time next year, give or take. Other questions or comments? So, that'll be an amendment to the Treasurers budget, amendment to the accountants' budget. We have the reserve fund request to sign off for the, to move forward. Do you actually need us to vote to execute the contract, or you all say?
I think we aren't ready to do that quite yet. I think we have a few more references we're checking up on. And otherwise, I think we'll be probably ready for your next meeting.
Okay, all right, great. So, we'll make those edits to the operating budgets appropriately. Anything else you have for us?
Um, I don't think so. Was there, no, I don't think there was anything else we're talking about tonight, right? Was there?
Yeah, I was gonna say, there was another one.
There's another email, but maybe for your March 28th meeting?
Oh, was that around the bond?
There was, yeah. I could just, I could just give you the basics of it, if you wanted to.
Heads up on what we're gonna?
Yeah, I sent an email, but I'm happy to talk about it tonight. It's basically an authorization for the Treasurers Office to be able to go ahead and file an application for a state-qualified bond. That's one of the options for the, for the fin, for the long-term financing. With the state-qualified bond comes a lower rate. But the way that you have to repay it is through, they take your Chapter 70 money. So, and then, you just have to basically replenish your Chapter 70 money.
And this is for the sewer?
This is for the sewer, yep, yep.
Okay.
So, that's a lot of information that was on the email. The try to, and Jennifer did her best to explain it to me, and I need to go back and reread it. So, the thought was, if we gave you all a couple of weeks to review that and see if you felt comfortable going in that direction, then maybe for your next meeting.
And again, this would just be an application. So, if we apply and we decide that we don't want to go this route, it's totally, we don't have to. We're not out any money or anything. It's just an authorization for us to be able to go ahead and do it and pursuant with Chapter 44 of the general laws. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them over email, or I can come back on the 28th as well, too.
Okay. Yeah, if we have any until, before then, we'll let you know and?
Feel free emailing, or call me.
Otherwise, we will?
I assume the bond, is there a set amount of money that they would take out in the two monthly payments? Or is that depending on how much you borrow in the bond?
We get roughly, oh, I think we're projected to get $650,000 in Chapter 70 next year. So, it would cover, it would cover the, and we're projecting about $100,000 or $106,000 for payment, repayment each year. So.
The repayment would be similar to what we had looked at from the bond before. It's just gonna be affected by the rate, right?
Yeah, so it'll be like 55 and 55, yeah, or something like that.
I imagine it will appear as a charge on your pay sheet?
Yes.
So, when you get that, that matrix that shows the different revenues and the charges that they're contributing to the town, that this would become one more entry on your charges?
And so, the wastewater debt service that we established would end up being a transfer to replenish that draw every year, instead of actually paying the debt service?
It's just a little messier, but if it saves us money, I'm all for it. Because they were talking about $70,000 in interest that we would save over the 20 years. And he's like, well, it's only a couple thousand dollars a year, so it depends on if you want to do that. But like, $70,000 to the town, that's a lot of money, so.
Absolutely.
It's worth it.
The only question I can think of right now would be, does it change anything on the repayment? Criteria, right?
The prepayment, no, I did ask that. I did ask.
It would be the same?
Would not matter, yeah. We're still going for like an eight to 10-year, I think.
Right, still.
Rather be fixed to, you have to pay through eight or so, and then, okay. Okay. Great, we'll get it more and talk about it next week, yeah, next meeting.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. I know I wanted to revisit the secondary education. We talked a little bit about whether to fund it at the projected number or kind of fund it at similar to prior years and then come back in the fall if, when we have actuals, if we need an adjustment. And then, I think over my time here, we've gone both ways, but primarily been doing it the second way for a while.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think I had brought it up several years ago. I'm in favor of looking at current year level funding secondary. And I'd have to go back and pull up their, their full budget to see the breakdown. But I believe there was capacity in there anyways, to be able to level fund and still have for additional students, even at level funded. And then, reevaluate after October 1st. And if we have to come back to a special to adjust, we can do it then.
I was just looking to bring that up myself. That was not in your packet materials, was it, Brian?
No, we met with the school on February 7th, so we probably would have received that just prior to.
So, the FY '22 secondary education appropriation is $1,477,405. And the FY '23 request right now is at $1,690,035. So, it's a proposed increase of $212,630.
And that 212,630 increase is?
It's not all in that same?
It's not all of what they were projec, what I would say. It's not the, it's not the total of the projected increase. So, even level funding would have, I believe, provided about a 30% increase from what? Trying to find that detail.
Yeah, I'm trying to find the detail email as well, and you might have to.
Is it the regular tuition to public schools?
Yes.
So, for FY '22, it was budgeted for $690,213. And for FY '23, they're proposing, oh, I'm sorry, 983-892? Hold on, I have to zoom. 983-892. So, it was an increase of 293,679.
And I guess I'm just saying to say that even if we just level funded it, we'd still have covered some of what they proposed would be the change, year-over-year changed cost.
Yes, that's what I, yeah.
And that's all I was trying to get at with that was?
So, even if we kept it for 690?
Even if we just level funded it and shaved the 212,630 off of a planned budget, we are adding some capacity beyond what the current year was.
Correct. And then, reevaluate in our first meeting in October. They have to have their numbers certified October 1st, I believe.
When was that again?
October 1st.
October 1st, okay.
Yeah.
That's when they take the census.
Got it. Thoughts about level funding and coming back to it later versus funding it now? Or preference either way?
I'm in favor of it. It's something that, you know, we've done in years past. I have no issue if, I would prefer to have to come back to the town with actual numbers based on students that are there and tax appropriately and raise it appropriate at that time, than make an assumption and be vastly off. It's one of the only budgets that we have the ability to do that.
I think that makes sense.
Deb, do you have that budget in an email, or is it in, just on your computer?
Um, no, I'm pretty sure I can send it to you. Um, oh geez, I, you sent it to us a really long time ago, Brian.
Yeah.
So, after your meeting, Caitlin shared in the new finance director sent over updated documents after your meeting?
Yes.
And forward that along, so let me see if I have that.
Is it in that one, or is it in the one from 24 that was sent before the meeting?
Oh, I'm not sure, because I have it saved to a file on my computer for, under the day, night we had the meeting, so.
So, that's the email? That's the email from February 4th, from Brian? Because that was before the meeting. There's FY '23 Irving draft. There's about seven attachments on that email to the, oh, you know what? That's the one you sent to the Finance Committee and copied me. Scott won't have that. Scott doesn't have that one.
I'm looking, Stan, I don't have that, and I knew Caitlin was gonna send it. For whatever reason, I cannot find it.
So, here's the presentation she sent after your meeting.
There we go.
Of course.
That's the presentation.
We don't have access to that.
And then, here's the FY '23 budget. The School Committee Chair was kind of afforded to me. There you go.
Thank you. And I have the School Committee Chair here tonight, too. Thank you.
Just the same numbers.
Okay. I think the other thing I was gonna call out is the trend is, you know, we've been budgeting around 13, 14, and the actuals have been one or two below that in overall in secondary ed. So, there may be some capacity there anyway, so. I just think hedging that we probably don't need it and coming back to it, I agree with you. Hope you have any?
No, I absolutely agree.
Okay. Ben, are you, that I didn't hear, are you favor, yea, nay?
I think that we've, I'm trying to think of the past. We've, we've always just gone flat and then made the fix afterwards, and it's always worked for me. But I can't, to me, it's 6.150 of the other million.
We've been doing it a while. We were doing it when Scott was on the School Committee.
Yeah.
I think that's when we made the change.
It's been over five or six years, seven years now.
I don't remember the last time we had to make an adjustment. Like, like we've said, we'll do it later, but I don't know that later has come, because I think it's, we've covered it. But I guess that was my other. I guess, do you agree, Chairwoman?
I do, and just kind of to your question of making an adjustment, it looks like the last year we might have made an adjustment was for 2020. Because they budgeted 638 and change, and their actual was 680, I'm rounding. So, I don't think we've had to adjust since then. I think it makes the most sense. I think I'd rather, yes, I think, I agree with Scott's proposal.
And just to be clear, you're referring to line 14, regular tuition? And I was referring to 18 grand total?
Oh.
Just the, the variation, I think, in the grand totals is less than the tuition itself, because once the special ed and all the other things are added together, that fluctuated along with it. I think it leveled out a little more. But just to be clear, what we're gonna, what we're talking about level funding is the 1477406 grand total secondary ed from last year, right? That's the, that would be level funded year-over-year, right? 1.477406? Sounds like that's a?
Yeah, and? Okay. Nope, we're good.
Okay. Make it so.
So, you would like me to tell the School Committee that they would like, you'd like to adjust this?
Yeah, if you want to let them know, we plan, we would like, we, we are going to adjust it to level fund year-over-year. And then, with the commitment that we will revisit once the actual numbers are in, if there's a deficiency, and bring it to a special to fund.
Okay, and I will update, with all the other changes you've made, I'll update your draft budget.
And in terms of capacity for some of the things we just discussed, it's gonna offset those then, so I'm bringing that down.
August, do we have a guest on the?
And while they figure that out, just, I do want to revisit that. You heard my hesitancy when you said the 1477?
I did, that's why I wanted to pause, yeah.
Because part of that is, and I don't know if it's a known, they won't talk about it, they shouldn't talk about it, the sped transportation line item of 13, if they have known needs, that 60,000 is a known need.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And that's the only other, you know, I mean, there's a, I think, a 90-something dollar. So, really, that is the only other need. So, what I was going to say, and I couldn't get my brain to wrap around it, is looking at the total programs with other schools and level funding that, which is the change of 149,587, if my eyes, where are you? Just below line 17.
I see, I see.
So, not, and that leaves the $60,000 alone, and it leaves the secondary transportation alone. Because those transportation costs are pretty standard. Those are known costs.
But row 15 is a reduction of 150 in sped tuition?
Right.
Which is, I would speculate, more known than regular tuition.
Right, so?
So, so the decrease of 147 versus the increase of 60, it's still a net decrease year-over-year. Which I think goes back to what you were saying, Deb, right? Which is, the 293 is the regular tuition, which is the variable, the most variable number in this, right? So, if we level funded that, you would drop the budget by 293. But instead, if we only drop it by 212, we should be adding some capacity for students.
I guess I was saying is, not looking at just 14 and level funding it, that section of programs with other schools. So, it takes into account the drop from sped tuition, and it takes into account the regular tuition, public schools. So, you'd be dropping out 149,587.
I follow your proposal. I guess that's not level funding, so it's, and it's not level funding regular tuition either. In your experience, I guess my question would be, 15, 13 and 15 are more known, right, than 14?
Yes, so the only one, I mean?
I'm not saying that.
Yes, the big drop, you never know what's coming in. So, you don't know what's gonna happen in September with new students, whether that's regular tuition or sped tuition. Those are unknowns. They have a drop because they probably have a known graduate or somebody leaving, so that's something that they can account for, but they have no idea if that's gonna hold true. I mean, we're, you know, it's splitting hairs at this point, because I know? I mean, we're, you know, it's, it's splitting hairs at this point, because I know I would have no problem either way coming back to a special and adjusting it, and so if it's just cleaner to say, level funded for that section, for secondary budget, you know, at 1477, that's fine. I was just trying to wrap my head around getting as close as possible.
I see. And I'm not partial to either method, so whatever the group would like, Ben, I just was thinking that, on the flip side, there, there must be some knowledge if the sped tuition's going up, I doubt it's going up that much just in inflation, so there's probably known changes calculated in there as well.
Right.
Yeah, I just got a text from Dan that he's online, he's unable to comment.
Oh, okay. So, we see you.
I'm fine with leaving it, as you had mentioned, leaving it level funded from FY 22 at the
406, yep.
Oh, I need my glasses.
Or a bigger font. On the budget files.
The budget files. I know, that's why I'm going to go change that zoom right now.
We're going to get a larger font in our budget next year. Get that cloud software.
Please.
Uh, Dan, I think we, we saw you for a moment, so if you're online, if you had anything you wanted to add, please feel free.
Thank you. Yeah, the superintendent's office has, in the last few years, very closely with this investment, as Scott has proposed, I just suggest we continue to communicate with them closely, so that we're not inadvertently leaving out or doing something that they really need in there, but they have been very agreeable to coming back later if more is needed, and I certainly agree with that approach. Thank you. Can I make one comment also, I wasn't able to keep me on reserves and transport, just for the record, it is a one-term, one-time unexpected or unanticipated thing, and I just, just for the record, so that everybody who wants a new software doesn't come up and say, gee, we'd like to have this, that, or the other, let's get it from reserve fund. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. So we're, we're good at 1477406?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
I will reach out to the school department and I will make those, those edits for your next revision, for your next meeting.
Thank you. I've probably, is there other budget request, operating budget request changes that I've left out, that we talked about coming back to, anything that anyone wanted to revisit so far?
Nothing that we've talked about, except, let's see, I wrote down a couple of things. We haven't discussed, and I know I, I had asked a question, I think, to you at one point, an adjustment to the table for the salary and, and wages.
Oh, okay.
Hasn't been brought up in any conversation yet this year, so I figure this is one of the last conversations of the budget prior to making all changes and coming back in two weeks, so if we're going to have that discussion, tonight would be the time. I had mentioned, we, so using a, I wasn't here when it was adopted formally, I was here when it was talked about and the process started, but the formal adoption of having step and grade, so in conversation, I think, with Brian, you know, so the, the idea of this was what used to be a discussion annually of an adjustment for anticipated cost of living increases or, or adjustments, and just tablizing it for, say, a, a 10-year period or 7-year period or whatever, whatever you have, and so what I've been aware of and, and part of and known for those, that's sort of a, it's a placeholder where you start, but you still annually would look at that to say, is that sufficient? Is that where we want to be? Do we want to adjust it this year? Is there an additional adjustment? Oftentimes, and I know at the school level, they negotiate all the time, there's contracts every three years, they have a table, they look at that, there's an adjustment above and beyond the, the step and grade. I think a lot of that was missed and, and not understood that that was happening, so I'd like to look at that and, you know, if there's, if you look at the cost of living, and, and we'll all feel it, it has been much greater than just 2% over the last couple of years. So I'm not sure that those projections of 2% annually are sufficient, so I would be willing to have a discussion about an additional adjustment to that table.
Not to the, to the question, but just to the background, because I don't believe you were in the board, on the board, as you said, when it was adopted. I think the, the decision at the time between the finance committee and the select board was to revisit in three years in terms of adjusting the overall tables. Not to say we can't do it sooner, but that was the, the timeline, which would be FY 24, would be discussing in 23, 424, so it's another year out. But not to say we can't discuss it now, that's, that's obviously we can. Thoughts?
That's my memory of that, is that we were revisiting in 23, 24, three years out.
Dan, go ahead.
Thank you. My recollection is the same as Bill's and Jake's, 23, 24, however, we have inflation that's somewhere around a 50-year high, hitting us right now and for the foreseeable future, it's going to get worse. If, if we don't look at this, the rich get richer, the poor get poorer, 2% of $100,000 salary buys a whole lot more bread and milk and gas than 2% of a $30,000 salary. I think it's a reasonable look at it early if others want to do that, there's good, good cause and good reason. If you want to wait till 23, 24, I know that's what we originally agreed on. I think there's good reason to look at it now, and probably everybody that drives a car would say the same thing, but I'll leave that up to, to you folks for the decision. Just my thoughts on it, thank you.
I can understand why we'd want to look at it now, but I mean, we, we put in the provision to do it every three years, and if, if we break the provision to do it every three years, what's, what's the changes from looking at it every year? Why do we have the provision to look at it every three years?
So I, part of what I'm, the, the stance I'm coming from, of how I look at it, is having worked within a step and grade system for over 20 years, and been part of contract negotiations with step and grade employees for over 20 years, those step and grade have been, if they're contracted employees, have been reevaluated at every contract negotiation, that's in town, that happens, and as well as non-contract, have been looked at, at the end of every, it could be fiscal, it could be a predetermined, but there's escalators in there, because the table only gets you to a certain max out, so if you have long-term employees that reach the top of their steps in, in the step and grade system, once they've reached there and they stay with the, the town long enough, they will no longer receive any other raises, so if there's no adjustments to that table, they go however many years without it. So when I hear that we're going to reevaluate a table in three years, and I see steps and, you know, grade changes, what you're, the, the discussion that's happening amongst several employees is that, that equates to other employees as a 000 COLA, because those, that table and step was worked in, that's guaranteed, and then there's still a, an ask of, what is the COLA given today's market? Is the town willing to look at a COLA to adjust that table based on today's market? So, that's, you know.
I thought that was part of our discussion when we went through this, that we wouldn't like to have people who fell into that category in the first three years.
Yeah, I, I'm with Ben, and I know this was part of a discussion that I had with Jennifer on Friday as well. We, we have one employee who is at the top, other than that, many other employees are not close, and personally, I struggle with the idea of capping out and having someone capped, that's something that was brought to light through this conversation, and it's something I'm going to wrap my head around, like, how do you, how do you, how do you work that? So, but I also agree with Ben, we worked really hard when we did this, that it was going to be, this was the plan, and it was a commitment for the first three years, and it was made really clear that this was what it was going to be, that their COLAs were not going to be done, that it was the step and grade, this is what we were implementing. I understand, looking at it, I know personally, I wouldn't be ready to have a educated decision about it in two weeks. I think there's a lot of information I personally would like to see about it, and I feel, trying to talk about it and get it done in place for a budget for FY 23, I don't feel it would be a thoughtful and really, really well, it took us, I mean, I think we worked on this for a year, Brian, to 18 months, to get here, so I, I think we're doing it a great disservice if we try and push it in, because, you know, we, we want to make a change, I don't think that's, that's fair to our employees.
Absolutely, and I, and I can appreciate the fact that that was done, I wasn't on the board at the time, I guess it would, that's why my surprise when I, I heard that it wasn't going to be discussed, because I wasn't involved in that conversation, because my, the historical knowledge was, and I'll go back to my time on the school committee for, for seven years, every, every contract negotiation that happened, and there was a COLA discussion, that was always above and beyond, so their table was adjusted, the town would then provide, you know, they already had step and grade, and so in addition to their step and grade, every, you know, contract, they were looking at additional compensation, so my assumption was, that's what we would be doing as well, and so I, you know, in that, so I wasn't part of that conversation, so that's why I bring it up, but if the majority of people are saying that this is a three-year and we're on our, we're coming into our third year of the three years and everybody wants to discuss it for FY 24, then I'm okay with being the minority on that one.
I just offer for context, just in terms of the, the compensation schedule, you all are, you all are correct, you're all having, it's a complicated conversation, but I just want to tease out a, a couple nuances. The, the big lift on the comp schedule, to what you're talking about, was doing the market study, trying to find comparable positions, similar sized communities, there was a lot of conversation about whether or not we identified the right range of communities, there was, it was quite the conversation, to get to what we had hoped to be, somewhere in the top five communities of our, of our county, we were trying to be somewhere in that, that area, and, and we did that work. In the last two or three years, and I, I remember I was cautioning about that, everybody else's tables have adjusted.
Right.
So people have adjusted around us, that's not good or bad, that's not right or wrong, it's just factual, things have adjusted, and to the conversation about the economic factors that are occurring, it can put additional pressure to revisit those conversations. The big lift again was just to get people on the right grades, and in some cases, that was a significant lift to fix that, and that works all fixed, and I don't think there's any need to revisit that at this moment, but as part of your every three-year check, and if you all commit to do that, I would say we should just double check to make sure our grades are still matching, but I don't think we need to worry about, are all the directors are on the right level. We've done that lift, we're there, but what you're talking about is, is there just an adjustment to the table as it's structured today, not changing how the table's put together, just is there an adjustment on top of it?
I'm talking about adjustment to each, to the salaries themselves, not to the descriptions, not to the grades, not to the steps, and, and what you were just talking about, Brian, is if we're looking at area towns and, and all the legwork that was done to make sure that Irving is, say, in the top five of the county, and that's where we want to sit, if we, if there are other towns that have a step and grade that are also adjusting their tables and we are not, then we are, we are now putting our employees back into a spot of saying, can I leave Irving and find better employment for more money? And one of the things, one of the reasons why it was chosen to try to be at the top five is because we wanted to be competitive, and we wanted to draw in some really good employees, keep our employees that are really good here and not looking elsewhere. So that's why I bring it up, because in my mind, if other tables are being adjusted by 2 or 3%, above and, above and beyond the, the steps of 2% that are already there, then, and we're not, then that, all of a sudden, you'll look back on year three, and we are now 3 or 6% behind the other, and so instead of top five, maybe we're top, you know, 15. And so now, now we're saying, well, that's not where we want it to be, and then you're coming back saying, oh, that's, that's a 7% adjustment, that's, that's much bigger instead of a slow progression, so that's why I was bringing it up, but...
I guess I would ask you, what towns are adjusting, because I know Brian did some legwork and sent us a table, and there were no towns close to us that I would consider our neighbors that, and I know it was just a voluntary survey, so maybe they didn't answer, but Montague, Greenfield, none of those towns actually answered positive or negative that they were making an adjustment, so that's part of kind of my question, is I keep hearing about these towns that are making these adjustments, but what actual towns are doing it?
Well, it's a little more nuanced, because they're not all, they're not all at the town level, some of them are at contract level, so that's, it's a little bit different.
That's not an apples to apples comparison, so I, I understand.
We have that same thing within our own town.
Correct, absolutely, but I mean, it's not, it's not the school's fault that they negotiated a great deal for their employees, and it's, you know, we, as a town, I want to make sure our employees are paid fairly, I want to make sure that they're getting great benefits, and that we have attractive things to offer them, so that the, the ones we have that are great, we, we want to keep everyone, and if someone does choose to leave, someone coming in is also, you know, is offered a, a good package. But I also, I, I struggle with the idea of we always have to be equal, the school's doing this, so the town has to do this. That, that kind of goes back to when this whole thing started, and, and people were using the word fair, and all of us kind of said, wait a minute, we can't use the word fair, because everybody has a different version of being fair, and so I, I think at some point, this, contracts negotiate differently than what we may be able to offer as a municipality.
Absolutely.
I'd probably like to jump in, I, I don't think we're prepared to have this conversation now, at this moment, and I've always supported the school, I've been here 35-plus years and, and fully supported the school all the way through, and, and I've watched over the years that, that the rest of the town was, was, was absolutely ripped at the school, because the school was getting more pay than the rest of the town, and, and, you know, the, the fight back was, well, that's too bad, because they negotiated a contract, and that's what they, that's what they live with, and we didn't push hard enough, and we didn't force them to, to, to toe the line like the rest of the town did. You know, having said that, we, you know, I, I agree, I don't know that we can equalize that, I'd like to try to, and, and like you, I'd like to be able to offer our employees more of a benefit package and a reason to stay here than just, you know, the, the health benefit that we get, which is, which is great, but, but in the end, it comes down to, can we afford it?
Would it be helpful for you all, just as you're thinking, if I was to pull information together for you all, just for your own reflection, and if you all choose to have another conversation about any of this, I'd be happy to do research for you if you'd want it.
Well, whether it's for this fiscal year or for, you know, '24, it's good information to have, you know, either way, even if this conversation doesn't, gets resumed at next, next fiscal year, even if that's where we resume it again, then it's still valuable information.
But the, the deadline for that is going to depend on whether or not we're revisiting this next week, and, and next, next meeting, sorry, and we've talked about the budget calendar, but this was the last joint meeting, I believe, on the budget calendar, so.
Correct.
Are we meeting in two weeks jointly, and I think we are, because we had a bunch of changes that we're going to have in tonight, so we probably want to come back to that, assuming the FinCom's available, but whether or not we want to, whether or not we feel like we're prepared to have further discussion to possibly make a change in two weeks on this or not, will depend on whether or not we need that information sooner.
or not we need that information sooner than later. And I'm, I'm also still wrapping my head around the idea that there's a built-in increase, and then is there an additional increase? Because it's just, you know, not working in public sector, not familiar with that idea as much, you know, and, and it's often in the contracts. But I also think it's important to stay competitive. We, we know the labor market is difficult, very difficult, no matter what we're hiring for, no matter who's hiring. Can't be competitive with everyone, but we definitely don't want to fall too far behind. And I would just comment, not, not saying we should or shouldn't consider it now, but to your point, Ben, about, you know, we set a plan of three years, and, and I, and I agree with that, we did, and I also agree with, you know, sticking to what we, what we've prescribed, especially when it's early. We, we haven't, you know, even had a few cycles to determine if it works or not. But I also don't think that negates taking outside factors into, you know, consideration. So if inflation is extraordinarily out of, you know, out of whack with what we would have thought two years ago, when we made that plan, then it doesn't necessarily mean that we don't make an adjustment, doesn't mean that you make an adjustment every year, to, to your, to your concern, right? If there's a, if there's a factor that drives a discussion out of cycle, because it's an, you know, it's an excursion from norm, then that's, then that's the reason, and it's not a indication that we're going to do it every year, it's a, it's a driver, I guess is what I'm saying, so. I, I guess I'd look to the group, you know, and we can go one by one if that makes sense, but gen, you know, do we, do we feel we're, we have enough time in one more meeting to consider a potential, you know, we can call it a market adjustment, to the table? If we got some data, potentially on inflation rates, what the states, and, you know, we used to use Social Security, you know, the other, the other, you know, federal numbers that have changed, and what, you know, other towns around us have done over the last twenty-four months? Or do we need more time, and, and we keep with our plan to do it in the next fiscal year? And Dan, I think you wanted to add something.
Yeah, thank you. Generally, I'm, generally, I'm in, in agreement with Finance Committee Chair Deb Smith, that I'm not in favor of rushing into things, and this would be kind of a rushed process, generally. I guess I would say in quotations, "All things begin equal," quote-unquote. We have this three-year plan, and I'd like to stick with it. However, things are not equal, and the price of bread, milk, and gasoline in particular are going up for everybody now, not July of 2023. I think if, if Brian could put something together that would, that would indicate that we could, could or shouldn't, add some small percentage on here, it would be responsible for us to look at that at this time, because things are not, you know, all things considered equal, they're, all things are scrambled up. Things are not equal now. I think it's worth looking at. If he was to bring the numbers, I'd certainly be willing to look at it. Again, even though I'm not generally in favor of going against a set plan, or doing things in a hurry, people, especially on the lower-income scale, are really looking for something as quickly as they can get it, not a year and a half from now, is my thought. I'd be willing to look at it.
Also, has a big burden to put on you.
But the, the question that I would then ask is, if we're making an adjustment this year, and we've told them we're going to make an adjustment next year, are we going to make an adjustment next year too?
Right.
I think the language was, you would revisit it after three years, not that you would make an adjustment.
Well, are we gonna make an adjustment this year?
It would be a bump to the timeline.
Then revisit, make an adjustment next year.
I think that's the discretion of this group, to make that decision, and to say, potentially, you know, we accelerated the review because of the economic factors in the world right now, proposing we went down that path, and actually did execute a change. And, you know, and, and so therefore, at the moment, our guidance is, we plan to come back to it in three more years, or in two more years, or whatever that decision is made. I think the two have to go hand in hand. If we make a change, then we also need to provide updated guidance that says, this is, this is what we plan to do next. And if that's three years again from now, instead of next year, then so be, you know, but, but I think that's our discretion, to make that decision at the same time. If you do something different, then we can have the, the reaction or the recourse from that, is that there's a, a change to the following plan.
I guess it's just me, Ben. The, the precedent set of doing, like, we're going to revisit every three years, and then we got, we worked so hard to get everybody to buy in on the process, only to then change it. And then, when they come back and, and, well, you changed the process once, can't we just change it again? What's, what's inviolate in the process, if you're going to change the process? But that's probably just me.
No.
You're not alone, no.
If anybody's just me, it's, it's me. Since I'm the one that brought it up. It's, that's, that's apparent.
My thought too, though, is, and, and Bill, you kind of touched on it, we don't just offer employees a wage, we offer them a package. So it's insurance, it's, you know, it's health, it's dental, it's vacation, and it's all those things. And I, and I kind of feel like, if we're going to go back and look at it, I feel like those things have to come into consideration in some way. You know, are we, I, I believe, is it eighty-four percent we cover for insurance? Is that what other communities are doing? Are other communities down around sixty percent or seventy percent? I, I think if we're, we're truly looking at the package an employee receives, or a new employee coming in, then to me, I think those other things come into play. And so I, I think the, the package as a whole then bears to be looked at. Because we can raise, you know, we could say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna look at this, you know, every three years, and we're gonna start, we're gonna, you know, do increases or inflation, we're gonna do a big increase. But if we're offering outside of, you know, the norm, so to say, in other areas, or do we now change those things too? You know, I, I just feel like it needs to be a more holistic look at the whole thing, not just saying, this wage is this, because if, I mean, for me personally, that's not how I'm going to stay home. If I'm looking at two job offers, I'm going to look at everything. My wages, my insurance, my, you know, what's costing me out of pocket, all those things. And when I hear things like, we want to retain that, the, the great employees we have, or we want to attract great employees, that, those people are looking at that whole as a package as well. And if we're already saying, hey, you know what, we're giving you eighty-four percent for your insurance coverage, and this town is only offering sixty percent, well, that's already an added perk that you're getting from Irving.
I know Scott's the, the exception, but I'm, I'm just gonna speak a little bit on both sides of the issue, because I think it's a really good discussion and topic, and an important one for our employees. The, when I thought about what is that, and, and Brian and I discussed this a little bit, because, you know, it's, it's not that far away to be discussing, and starting to do the groundwork to, to go through a review, and, you know, for the next fiscal year. To me, we, we did all the baseline work, and it was a huge body of effort to get to where we are, but now, to me, to, to, if, if our goal, and kind of what you alluded to, is to be, you know, at least in the top half of, of the, the county or the local employers, you know, public employers, and be competitive in that, then that's the whole package, I agree with you. And so how do our benefits compare, and I'll just use your eighty-four, sixty, you know, example, on health benefits, you know, health insurance coverage and, and cost? So if that was our breakdown when we went into this, and we haven't escalated, changed the percentages, then that's where we felt was competitive when we started. If we're looking at surrounding towns and saying, how does that compare over time? If they were at sixty, and they're still at sixty, and we're at eighty-four, and we're still at eighty-four, then that, in effect, is no change, except did the rates go up? And so that percentage is discreetly higher. If their rates went up seven percent, and ours went up ten percent, well, okay, ours is costing more than it did comparatively. But that's where I think it's very nuanced, and there's a lot of factors in there, if we're going to now look at the whole comp package. But I think, I want to be careful not to just assume that we're competitive, because our numbers are higher or better. Because maybe they were two years ago, and we felt like that was competitive. If they're not any better, then that's the same competitive value it was before. And so if the wage went up, just because we have a twenty-four percent better match, doesn't mean it's any more competitive than it was two years ago. And so just to be careful, that whole picture is complex in my mind. And wage is a piece of it, but it's not the only piece. So I, I just, that's where I don't feel like the time is on our side to do this, and, and to, to have enough data to make that kind of analysis in two weeks. If we're coming at it from a direction of saying, we're looking at these, you know, global and, and large, you know, national influences that are driving costs up exorbitantly above normal, norms? Norm, what a word in co, after the pandemic. Then I think that's a discreet analysis, and if that's what we're using as a benchmark to say, we think we need to make a change, then that I could, I could see maybe being able to do, and, and with a smaller set of data that allows us to make that decision, if we feel that's necessary. The overall, what I feel like the more holistic comp review and competitive review is, is to me, a body of work that shouldn't be a year, but it will be more than two weeks. I just don't think we can get there. I see you want to chime in.
You just articulated the exact point I was trying to communicate. I wanted to clarify my offer, although I will do anything you tell me to do. What you just described, I'm not doing in two days. That's not reasonable. It's just not going to happen.
I'll give it till Thursday. No, no.
And so the, the outreach I did to you all a few weeks ago, to prepare for this work over the coming year, is exactly what you just described, that very large, complex spreadsheet and understanding, digging deep into that information, and other, other true changes to the package of the comp schedule. That's a much bigger conversation that you've articulated. What I can do for you in the, the next few days, is look at the larger economic factors, and if any of our peers are responding in some way to that. And if that is information that is useful for your conversation, I'm happy to get that for you. But I would not be able to do the, the prior in the next few days.
And that just spurred me maybe to offer a different answer to your question about, what would we do next year? If we did something that was really driven by inflation, I'll just use that as the main, you know, economic factor, then I would probably be inclined to say, we still move forward with the overall process next year of doing the more comprehensive review, and then factoring in the change we already made into those numbers, and then is there any other adjustment, or are we good? Did we do it a year early, and it's solid, and we think we're good for, for two or three more? So, so maybe just to say that, if we do this, maybe just one, you know, major driver adjustment or review, regardless of the action we took, I would encourage us to still go through a thorough process to evaluate the overall compensation and competitiveness. Whether that dictated any change or not, again, it was a, we'll review, not we'll, we'll change, right? So, a little different answer than I gave you before, my, my opinion.
Well, I was going to say, perhaps part of the conversation needs to be then, that, you know, markets are cyclical, and it may well be the war on inflation for three or four years. Do we do this every year, that it becomes an issue? And do we stop doing it if inflation is no longer here? Does that need to be a larger part of the question, that it's going to be a three-year evaluation period, barring things that are, you know, not of the town's control, like inflation? Maybe does inflation trigger us to look at it at a, at a shorter interval than three years?
Great ideas. I, I mean that sincerely, I think that's a great-
I could tell.
Piece of criteria to add.
I think I could tell.
Sometimes my short answers come across as very flippant, and I don't, I didn't-
That's great, Ben.
Yeah, I think that's great things for us to figure out how we incorporate into, what is our processes, you know, and, and how is this sustainable over time? Because the last thing, and the biggest thing that I'm concerned about in this whole process, is we are where we were two years ago, three years ago plus, which is, we didn't keep up with our tables. We kind of, to some degree, not that the effort and the, and the, and the place they were coming from was good, but the kind of ad hoc changes in different areas, it wasn't consistent, and it wasn't thought out across the entire, we didn't really have a table, but the entire compensation, you know, process for all employees. And it became very out of sync with the market, out of sync between positions and all of that. And so that work was not something I want to make anyone go through again, to get back kind of into a, a better place. And so how do we, so I guess the first thing is, everything we can do to incorporate steps and criteria into our process, that ensure that we don't, that we head that off well ahead of time, is great. Do I hope that we have five to double-digit inflation every year? Absolutely not. Do I think we have to react every time if it's continuous? No. Is it something we should probably acknowledge and discuss? Yeah. Doesn't mean we can or will make a change, but I, I don't know. I don't have the right answers. I would expect everyone, and regardless of the sector, is facing the same things in their employment, and the same questions and concerns, and, you know, in their annual processes too, so it's not simple. That, Dan, yes, go ahead, Dan. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I just be clear on, on what I would favor or not favor? Looking at the whole comprehensive package, looking at, should we adjust the process? As Ben perhaps suggested, long-term, long-term's fine with me. Looking at a very narrow, targeted, here's where we are today, it's very unusual times, is there something we should do as an employer for our employees? I'd be, I'd be willing to look at that. But also keeping in mind, the taxpayers are paying the bill, they're all, it's costing them more to put bread, milk, and whatever else they put on the table, on the table. So I'm sensitive to that also, can't just offer up bags full of money to our employees. But I, I'd be in favor of the, the narrow approach, rather than the comprehensive approach. Let's take a year for the comprehensive. Thank you.
And I don't want to say this to say we can't continue the discussion right now, because I'm fine with that too. But who is in favor of revisiting this with a little more data, potentially on the larger scale, in two weeks?
If you're talking larger scale with-
Inflation factors.
No, see, I was, I'm, I'm looking at something, I would echo what Dan just said, in, in looking at sort of the, the micro of, right now, the portion of wages, could we look at that and see if that's something we'd like to revisit this year? But the whole comprehensive, when you say the holistic, full package, we can't do that in two weeks.
Agreed. What I said was not what I meant. I, I meant, do we want to look at, how is inflation affecting things? What is COLAs and, and other adjustments at the federal and state levels planned or projected? And, and consider if that needs a wage adjustment this year? Or, or are we waiting for the comprehensive plan? I guess, is that, anyway, the narrow, not the wide.
I'll be the one to raise my hand, I'd be willing to look at it.
And that doesn't mean we'd make a change.
Yep. But I'd be willing to have that conversation.
I, I'm willing to look at it. I just want to, we were all there, throwing that whole process, and that whole process led to a lot of anger, and a lot of upset people, and a lot of demands that were totally unreasonable from some people, and, and, and took us to a place that we hadn't even thought of going. And, you know, I, I don't, I, I want to see a process that works for everybody, and for the town, as well as the employee. And, and, you know, I, I just feel like sometimes, that's not always going to work for everybody, and not everybody's going to be happy with it in the end. Whether it's two percent, or one percent, or six percent, or, or what the school is getting, we, you know, we, we all sit here and try to do the best we can for our employees, and, and that should be the final goal, and I'm, I'm willing to sit there and do that. I just don't want to see us kind of go through that process that we went through the last time, that people still haven't gotten over, even though we wound up with a table.
Yeah, I, I would like, if, all of you to just, yeah or nay, it doesn't have to be any more than that, but I, you open to, to looking at it.
I'd I'd be willing to talk about it in a couple of weeks. I mean, the more I'm thinking about it, I'm not an economist. I mean, wouldn't it be just a wag any number we come up with?
Yes, I mean, I, yes. To your to your comment earlier, markets are cyclical usually, how long and how much time do they spend on either end of the scale? When's the last time we had inflation of these levels? They've happened before. Did they last for multi-year? Not usually, sometimes they do, but usually they rebound the other way. So I it's, but you know, to to your point, do you work a little when they're here? Do you work a little when they're there in the in the right directions? To try to stay aligned, maybe.
Sure, I I'd be willing to talk in a couple of weeks. This has been fun.
Charlie?
I mean, I'm I'm willing to look at the the information. I personally don't think changes should be made until next fiscal year, but I'm willing to look at the data.
I am a firm believer in having all the data and being as educated as I can before making a firm decision. So I am more than open to looking at all the information and going from there.
I called on everyone else, so I'm gonna say I have the same take as you do.
You forgot Dan.
He kind of already did the start that before I kind of made everyone do this. He already said he was in the narrow. He kind of kicked it off, but go ahead, Dan. You're welcome to add.
No, I'm I'm good with looking at at the the narrow objective at this point and the bigger picture throughout the next year.
Then is is the FinCom available in the 28th at seven to continue? Okay. For Brian, I'm gonna throw out a couple of things, but is there anything that any of you think of right now that you want him to provide? And we'll get that maybe by the by end of the week, by Monday, and then we'll have a week to kind of digest it before we talk about it again. Probably, you know, what is social security doing? What is inflation numbers? What is Massachusetts doing in terms of any of the the governmental level? Is there anything else or anything that we'd like to have to understand?
If surrounding towns are doing stuff, what are they doing? Preferably possible for the non-contracted side if you can, just so it's as close to being apples to apples as possible. And then I'd like insurance to help.
If you have contract as well, I would like that because while we, it's not the same. I know there are some towns where that's mostly all they're gonna have. So it should be still have to compete with it even if the units that exist there are not. We don't have in a contract unit, we still have to compete with the. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd be fascinated to know how Irving Elementary School is dealing with it. Are they changing their numbers because of?
Every year it's a contract.
No, no.
Every three years.
Specifically inflation that we're hitting now.
So it functions differently with contracts. Typically, contracts are three year contracts for most employment contracts. That's what I'm familiar with. I don't think I've ever heard of anything shorter unless there's I shouldn't say that. There's times when you would do a shorter contract if you know that there's, you know, impacts that are coming. But typically, they're three year contracts and you negotiate out your, you know, it's basically the same as escalators. For services, you know, there's work in escalators. You say, you know, cost of everything, we're going to anticipate that things go up and we're gonna bargain back and forth until we come to an agreement on what we think that looks like. And during those, to be clear, it does take into account exactly what Deb was talking about. They're whole packages. They're not, it's not a standalone, let's look at the table. It's always when you're talking about contracts, it is everything. It's, you know, you're you're bargaining the 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 full umbrella of everything, you know, not just a table. So that's how the school's been handling it since I've been affiliated with it and it's every three years. And they look at it and they look at the full package and they, you all hear the same conversations back and forth. What do we get for, you know, longevity and, you know, how much does insurance cost us and, you know, what are area towns? It's the same exact conversation.
And I would just add to discreetly, this is the last year of the current school contract, I believe.
They're working, they're.
So they're negotiating for 23?
Yes, theirs will go in for 23.
But in general, whenever the three years expire, the year before when they're in negotiations, I'm sure the union is taking a look at what has changed in those three years and it's a driver, even if it was a year off, right? They're gonna say, well, inflation was really significant in 22, so when we come back to the table, it's a driver for asking for more. Which is natural in negotiation. And on the flip side, just in general, all the exact numbers. But currently, the current contract, if you're asking current, they're getting a step every year if they're not maxed and they're getting an escalator on top of that every year. It's already baked in. It's not necessarily inflation adjustment, but it's in there. There there is something additional in there every year, I guess is what I'm getting at. Okay, so I think you've got a list. We'll have that to ponder for
Sorry to make more work for you.
For our next meeting.
I just realized how big the conversation was getting. I realized I was not clear, so. We all got to the same space, so we're good.
Okay. It's not that simple of an equation, but can you get us a rough sense of what a percentage point of increase in salary costs annually? Because part of this is what's the taxpayer impact, right?
Seventeen nine. Seventeen thousand nine hundred.
Look at you.
Total salary for the town is 1.795 million.
Non-school?
Non-school. See if it's close.
That's if it's close. I'm just directionally, right? What is that? What is that?
Everything we don't trust Scott's math.
Not at all. Scott and I
I just pulled it, I just pulled it from the budgets that we've been reviewing for the last month and a half. It's the beauty of having our budgets separated by wage and and salary.
Yeah. Sounds lower than I would have thought. I would thought it was more in the 50 range. It surprises me, so it's okay. Yeah, hey, if it's seventeen nine, that's that's fine. Eight, nine, whatever you say. Okay, good on that topic?
Yep.
Capital, back to operating budget, anything else on operating budget?
I don't have anything else, right, gentlemen? No, I don't think so.
Okay. Capital improvement program. So we talked about that a little bit last meeting. Brian put together the draft from what capital recommended at our last joint meeting with them. Any questions or comments on what's in there so far?
That is accurate. Are you now okay if I build that into the annual town meeting warrant? It's gonna take up about two, three warrant articles.
It looked like it incorporated the changes that we discussed in the last meeting and escalating a few things. So I didn't see anything that was missing.
I didn't see anything.
Nope.
Okay, so yes.
All right. I will make those changes.
Revenue, did we, we probably want to look at that next week now that we made so many changes tonight.
I was gonna say, I'm gonna take the the route, I have not been given any updated guidance from the state about any changes to their plans for the revenue. They're still working through the House Ways and Means Budget Process. And I have no reason to expect a change in our local receipt. So those things should all be true. But let me take all of the changes that you've made to the spending plan, put that into the same summary sheet and get that back out to all of you again, just so you can see where you stand.
You have one question and well, maybe as we get into the ATM. So I guess we'll move into the ATM discussion now, draft, draft annual town meeting warrant. The, I just don't recollect, the, there's a capital improvement article on there? Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund article to move money in?
Right.
Did the capital make a decision to recommend that or was that just a carryover article? I don't remember discussing it either here or in the capital, but I I just may have forgotten.
I think we touched on it a little bit in talking about it.
I think we changed the amount.
But it's always, it's
It's just kind of, it's a, it's, I don't want to say it's a carryover, but it's a standing article.
Yes, yes.
But a number wasn't a discussion yet and
No, I think we dropped it last year, but we decided we were just gonna keep it what it was prior to what it what our usual value was.
Is it like 160?
150 is what we put in last year.
Yeah.
And when I was drafting up the budget, I left as a placeholder and put it in front of everybody as an asterisk saying, I'm carrying a placeholder just so you can forget about it, but
That's fine.
And this is what you did last year. So I've been carrying as a placeholder.
And I think that's the conversation. We had a capital. I think all of us nodded and went, uh huh.
That sounds great.
Okay, and it very well may be partly driven from the discussion about what does the funds look like when we, it all summarizes. I think some of the last drafts, we had just a slight surplus left. And I, my quick number says we we should have improved that if anything, not gone over. So hopefully, we're still on the on the right side of the numbers, but see what they look like next week. Through the annual time, has everyone had a chance to take a look? They have any concerns or questions through the articles? They're financially driven. I know, Brian, you put a couple of comments on here for us to respond to.
Yeah, I had a few things.
Do you, you guys want me to just kind of touch through the articles real quick or do you want to just jump around to whatever people have?
It's up to you, whatever you prefer.
Okay.
I only had two, two items.
Well, then why don't we just jump to them?
One was Article 17. I think you asked about the question of whether or not the closeout of the solar funds should be considered part of that repayment. I think it should. I think it was part of that building coffin, yeah, building project. So, you know, we we've said we want to reimburse, you know, X amount per year. Closing that out, we closed out 17933 and change. So, you know, I would look at it and say, instead of the 213 that you were anticipating, subtracting that off and only making that 42 from raised inappropriate.
The 273 and making that?
Yeah, the the total of 273, which was the aggregate, taking the 17933 off because there's already a motion to move that in, effectively keeping it at the 273. But you, for the year, but utilizing the closeout of, for this one year, utilizing the closeout of that loan to satisfy the requirement that we told the town we were gonna do. On the other hand, on the other hand, it's that's unexpended funds and therefore we're putting it back without using it and we still need to repay the, either one. I think I was looking at that saying, if we got into a point where we had one time expenditures that we needed to, that's one where
Oh, right, if we were getting over.
If we were getting to the point where we were a little bit over, that's one where we could say, there's 170,000 for a one time. Not for annual increase of operating, but for for one time expenditure for FY23, there there's capacity there to do that and say that we're still transferring 273, we're just gonna utilize the closeout of that loan as part of it.
I was thinking about it in a different direction. First part, completely agree. The solar funding, the separate solar funding was from, if I recall, was either free cash or raised inappropriate. I believe it was free cash. So it wasn't from stabilization. So putting it in there and considering it part of the repayment made sense to me because it was funding from other places. This is the second to last, the one identified here, this 273 is the second to last stabilization payment to pay back the self borrowing. If we, my thoughts was to keep this article as is, if, as long as the budget capacity is there, which I think it will be. And if we take the 179 solar off the amount we we owe ourselves, we're down under 100 after this payment for the next fiscal year. And we hope to get 100,000 from LEED certification, which would be the balance. And so this would effectively be the last payment.
If we keep it at the
If we keep it at the 273 and then hedge the, in the next year, we'll get the other 100
So you're using the 170.
Directed in there in a special or at the next annual, and then it's paid off and there is no payment in FY24.
Yeah, and so I guess either way, it's, we're doing it in 23, you know, 23 or doing it in 24, either one, I'd be fine either way. At some point, we're using those funds to offset the repayment, whether it's this fiscal year or next fiscal year.
So that premise, I'm I'm with you on that. I don't know what everyone else thinks.
I don't mind either way. I'm fine with it either way. And if we, if we find ourselves that we don't have the capacity, then maybe we use it in 23 instead of 24. If we do have the capacity, use it in 24 and just keep it as is. Either one.
With other projects down the pike and some of the other conversations about, do we potentially do that again if we've wrapped that up this year instead of, you know, that that gives us that opportunity sooner. So for now, we'll hold it as is, but we will assume to take the, we will take the solar off the amount remaining to pay back on our running tally. Next?
Did you? Hold on one second. My brain just froze for a second. Go with somebody else. I'll come back.
Okay.
It's kidding. I need to reboot. Well, no, okay, so I gotta go back. So I I didn't know if the question related to the preliminary semi-annual tax was something that would affect this budget or, and she's not.
That's the other thing we wanted to generate before.
Yep.
I knew there was something else I wanted to ask her about and I just I couldn't, I knew, I even had it on my notes, but I didn't have my notes up. We were talking about something else.
So, yes, I would, now that you've all suggested that you're going to meet next week or in two weeks, if you're willing to do that, I would encourage you to invite the treasurer, the assessing office and the tax collector. So there is a, like we do every year, I ask if there's any local adoptions or if there's any legislative actions that departments are recommending. A recommendation has come forward from the treasurer and the collectors' offices to consider changing your tax billing from a true semi-annual to a preliminary semi-annual.
Right.
There's some, there's some benefits in terms of cash flow that is of interest to the tax collector in the treasurer's office. There are some other changes that would happen and and work impacts on the assessing office that has led them to have some concerns. And I, I've encouraged all three to express both the things that they think work and the things that they are concerned about with all of you so that you can make an informed decision about whether or not you would want to take it to the voters for consideration. Adopting it does require a vote at town meeting.
Right.
And they are very willing to come meet with you and have that conversation. And then I would just say in terms of implementation, if you adopt it at town meeting without specifying an effective date, the assumption is it's going into into effect for the next fiscal year. I would say that that would probably be a heavy lift to make that type of a transition, both in the office, but also to educate the citizens in a single year or in a single two, three month time span.
Yeah.
So I think my recommendation, if you were to do this and the voters did approve it, is maybe consider an implementation for the following fiscal year so that you have plenty of time to really work with the citizens and get them to understand what's about to happen. Many towns have done this. We wouldn't be the first by any stretch. But it does come with a learning curve.
With new software.
And a new software package on top of it. So the office is already
May not make sense to, yeah, yeah, okay. Is everyone open to having that discussion next meeting? I mean, I think it's
Yeah.
It just logically makes sense to me. It's more programmable, it's more planned, it's more there's advantages. Now, I'm sure there's disadvantages, so the team can come bring that to us to to review, but is everyone open to that? Okay.
So I'll invite them to March 28th.
Please. That was your other one?
Yeah, that's all I have. Yep.
Any others? Anyone had on ATM? Just flipping through it, most of it is pretty standard. Obviously, Brian, you'll make adjustments to like five and six and all the others as we
Go back through and make all those changes. If I just redline those changes, if I do track changes, it doesn't show up in the PDF version.
Why don't you just update them to the new numbers not tracked? Because
Okay.
We said we were gonna do those. So unless we make other reporting changes, that is the plan.
Okay, then that's all I'll do.
I think
Okay.
I think I'll just clean her.
It was only 33,000 for the wastewater vehicle?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Don't encourage him to ask for
I was gonna say, in today's market of vehicles, it does seem very strange that 33,000 is enough. But I think Danny even asked that question, is that enough?
Don't get me going with market escalators. Market adjustments. Flipping through, you'll fill in capital, you talked about that.
Are you okay for wastewater? We've will have two projects, both are appropriations. So if I was to put them as a metrics article So, if I was to put them as a metrics article as opposed to two separate articles for them, is that okay? Is what we've been doing for other like?
You, you're referring to the vehicle, the grant match?
Right.
The, okay. I have no concern.
I have no concern.
Just two separate line items, so that it's similar to the way we do all the other articles and then voters can still.
Okay.
Rather than just having articles for the sake of them.
I didn't see anything else in the ATM. So, good on the ATM. Anything?
Yeah. It's been good.
Let's see. There was two items on your list and I don't have it in front of me and I don't know why, reference to articles on the ATM that the team brought forward. One was the tax change.
Oh.
The other one was, and I'm just not.
The bylaw. So.
Oh, yes, the bylaw.
So, there was another item that was brought to our attention. There is a statute that you all adopted at town meeting. I think you've adopted it twice. Once in the nineties and then again, maybe two thousand and five. It's a statute that says that if somebody is delinquent in their tax payments, the licensing board or commission may be able to withhold or temporarily suspend or permanently revoke a renewal of a, of a liquor license, a business license, things of that nature until the, the tax payments due. It comes along with a bylaw. There's a requirement to have an implementation bylaw. Speaking to the town code project that we've all been sort of getting our brains back around, it was sort of lost that we had this bylaw on the books from the nineteen ninety's. So, you do have the bylaw in place. The issue is that in two thousand and sixteen, they did a massive override of, of many state statutes called the Municipal Modernization Act. It, I think, touched two or three hundred pieces of legislation. One of the ones it changed was that particular statute, which means you have to go back to that bylaw that everybody has on the books and just make sure that all of the components of it reflect those changes in two thousand and sixteen. So, the team was bringing it back to your attention that upon their review, they think that we just need to make some minor tweaks to that bylaw. I don't know if you feel like you want to do a deep dive on a bylaw related to tax payments and the issuing of licenses and how you handle that, or if you want to wait till a special town meeting. But it's something we should do. It's very rare that you use this bylaw. You've only used it once since I've been here.
Is it something we can incorporate into the code project rather than as a standalone? Or is that timing not conducive?
I would just say that until we address it, we probably should refrain from using the statute until it's been updated. That's it. And again, you've only used it once since I've been here. So.
Yep. I guess unless anyone feels differently, I would say let's, at some point, review the substantive changes that are recommended. They don't sound to be very major.
Nope.
And assuming they're not, then I would think we'd just submit them as part of the overall code update because it sounds more like an update than it does a major change, which I would bring, want to bring separately.
Okay.
Personally.
I'm just a little curious as to why it's so, why, why this is kind of stuff is coming so late?
Good question. Again, it's not one of those ones that we use often. And so, I believe it was maybe the tax collector's office had gone back through their continuing education, which happens annually. And I think this is an issue that maybe other communities have encountered. And they then went through the process after the two thousand and sixteen act of updating their bylaws. And so, I believe it was the Department of Revenue in their recertification course, courses, making everybody aware, if you haven't done this yet, go back and double check and make sure that that's been revised. And so, when we did our review, we have not revised it yet. So, that's it.
Does that work for everyone?
Yeah.
Review, if it's minor changes, we'll leave it in the code project and if not, we'll address it separately.
Yeah.
The, I believe the last item for the finance committee, unless you all have anything for us, is review and discussion of the preferred church street bridge construction proposal. So, the capital planning committee recommended putting it on the warrant. And we have it currently in the capital plan at the highest priced proposal. There were three different proposed designs with their own separate costs. And so, you're welcome to stay. You don't have to. We need to come to a decision on what design are we putting forth so that we have a cohesive article to, what is that borrowing request for? Not just a bridge, but this kind of bridge. And, and I guess in summary, the biggest drivers were the three styles of bridge, the general ideas on railings. Didn't seem to really be driving much difference in cost or if they did, I didn't see it. So, whether it was a, let me open mine right now if you have it already.
I mean, if you have, yeah, if you're open for conversation on it, I think there was a recommendation of the precast three-sided as it allowed for the largest amount of hydraulic flow.
Yep.
I would be in favor of that one, the precast three-sided, making sure that whatever we choose for, you know, an aesthetic siding on that, you know, maybe there's a liner on the precast, so it looks like a, maybe a stone facade rather than just a, a slab of, you know, gray concrete. And then, there's two rail systems that I would go with, the six point two point one or six point two point three. It's the cast-in-place parapet bridge rail or the steel bridge rail. I was not a fan of the middle one. While it is a state, you know, sanctioned one, I, I didn't care for it. I know the first one, I think, the six point two point one, I think they, in their, said it's not something that is typically used.
It's not a mast DOT standard rail.
It's not a standard rail.
I don't know the implications of that.
I don't know, I don't know the implications of that either. But.
I like that rail.
I do too.
I do too.
That was my number one, the six point two point one.
Which one though? The, well, nevermind. I shouldn't say which one. The one on the left with the, it looks like steel on top of it.
Yes. And I don't know if that's part of it, if they're, what they're talking about is, is the print design underneath. Cause that's actually the rail, cause that's elevated, I think, three feet or so from the, and then that's additional on top. So, I'm not sure, you know, if they're talking about, because when they talk about the, the form liner to print design, the examples are what you see on the print on the sides.
Right.
And that's a preformed. In addition, we would probably be looking at, you know, a wrought iron rail or, or some steel rail like that, you know, on top. But if it wasn't that, I would say the bottom one, which is just your, to me, it's your typical steel bridge rail that you see on lots of bridges everywhere. But, yeah.
The, you mentioned the precast three-sided. I assume when you said a little more aesthetically pleasing, you're referring to the left versus the right in the pictures where the, not the guardrail part, but the fact that it has.
Yeah. You see the difference between, you know, they do a formed, you know, line on that.
The other one is pretty rough looking, yeah.
Yeah. And the one on the right, I mean, it just, yeah. It looks very industrial and it's not pleasing since it's in a residential neighborhood. I'd like it to look nice. The reason I, I went with the three, the three-sided is that we had a lot of discussion about making sure that we're not encroaching. And I even asked the engineer to look at, can you lengthen that? Can we get a, a cost, given the fact that that is actually the cheapest one? And we put a placeholder for one that's about what, two hundred thousand more?
We put a placeholder for the most expensive.
For the most expensive. To me, if we can still make that work, it gives capacity in there. If there's an opportunity to move that, you know, even another foot, you know, and, and they said if you did that, you'd have to lengthen the deck, just a hair, you know, with the pre, prefabbed can be done, but that cost might shift. So, I was just trying to alleviate the channeling as much as we can on that, on that one turn of that, of the brook. But if it becomes over what we have the capacity to spend and we have a dollar amount that we can, then we stick with what we have.
Other thoughts or different direction on any of it?
No, I, I, I think the, the three-sided is, is the way to go. And I was kind of leaning toward the more expensive one. I think it was one, one million five hundred?
The, the box?
Yes, the, the box.
The box culvert?
Yeah. But, um, I, I, I think the three-sided does what, what we needed to do and we saved some money.
Yeah.
My, go ahead.
I was gonna say, the reason I stayed away from the box one is because then you are getting into riverbed.
Yeah.
And you're doing a full excavation of riverbed and you're, you're putting in a full box. So, it changes the whole scope of the work. And while that dollar amount might work, I'm not sure the time on task to be able to get through all of the other pieces make it feasible.
Yeah. I agree.
Ask for clarification. So, there's a precast concrete three-sided frame on precast footings for one million four hundred and two dollars, four, four hundred thousand two. And then there's precast, precast concrete three-sided arch on precast footings for fourteen. Which precast are you gentlemen referring to? The fourteen oh two or the fourteen forty?
Fourteen oh two.
Okay. Thank you.
That's the one I was referring to.
The rectangular as opposed to the arch.
As opposed to the arch, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
They are so close. It's hard to.
The names are not great.
I have pulled up when I'm looking and I just like to refresh my memory a little bit more. I'm looking at the advantages and disadvantages. And I, my only concern with the one that you gentlemen were looking at is this is the one that has like the heaviest footings and it may require special, specialized erection procedures. And I want to say, when the engineer was here, he talked to us about being in the riverbed and having, if we had to do that kind of work, it could, and I might be way off base, so just stop me if I am. We might need additional permitting. That's not this one.
Can I stop you? Yeah, no.
Okay.
Um, that's the box culvert.
Right.
Because we'd have to divert the riverbed to do the work.
Okay.
And, and that's a reason why I'm, I'm not in favor. I also just don't feel there's aesthetics to it. And maybe the ones shown just aren't great examples. But when I see box culverts, I don't think of bridges and I don't feel like they're, they feel very like city industrial overflow waterway kind of structures. They don't remind me of rural bridges.
They're actually really cute, if you could call a bridge cute. If you go over to Athol, if we were leaving the pizza place but heading up towards Sterrett's, there's that, there's like that convenience store. Everyone at home can laugh at me because I don't do directions at all. But, um.
I know what you're talking about. I'm just not sure which bridge you're referring to.
There's, if you're going in this direction on the right, there's an industrial type steel building. I think they might be like a welding shop or something like that. Kind of as you're going in, the food pantry is just down the road. Yeah. I, I, I don't do directions. I apologize. But that is.
Somewhere on two A between the junction at McDonald's and downtown? Or is it just past downtown?
It's further. There's the little like brown, there's a convenience store. There's an offshoot road that goes up where there was a really bad accident not too long ago. Things that stick in my brain. Anyway, that bridge is actually a very nice looking, and I think it is very close to the precast, but it has the nice stone. It looks like it's like beautiful stone. So, if we could mimic something like that, I think would look really nice for that neighborhood.
I, I think the arch is more aesthetic, the, the middle option, the arch style. My, my issue with it is it's less hydraulic. It's going to be closer. And I, and I think having the largest opening we can is advantageous for anything we're going to do later or try to improve. And, you know, so I just, that, that was my biggest concern with that. It's the smallest hydraulic opening is not where I want to go.
It's the exact reason why I was, I leaned toward the, the first one.
And staying out of the river.
Yes.
To avoid the last one seems like logical. And then we end up at the lowest cost version seems nice too.
And I agree with both Bill and Scott. If we could do something like the six point two point one for railings, the other two just, one is just a big bulky concrete cast, which just doesn't seem aesthetic. And the other one, which is, I think it's just your typical metal, just looks kind of busy. And just again, to me, it feels more industrial. I wouldn't expect to have that type of railing in a neighborhood.
Well, just leave me out of the railing stuff because I don't want to be in the next newsletter that talks about fencing and railings.
Touche. Well, I don't mind. So, I like it too.
I've already given my two cents. I think we should, you know.
You said the left one, both the printed side and a metal rail.
And I don't know, I can't tell by the engineer's, you know, documentation, if they were just giving an example, two examples of what the form liner would give you for a faux look of, of stone. I think the fact that there's a, a metal or a steel railing on top of that, that's irrelevant for that picture.
Decorative.
That's additional. From, that's my look at it. They're trying to bring your eye to the three or four-foot concrete. That's the actual railing in, in that option.
I think if you look at the pictures of the precast three-sided frame examples, the first one on the left that has a guardrail railing and has the cast underneath it, I think you can tell the difference that there's an additional cast in the, in the railing cast examples above the, the bridge structure. So.
Right.
Yeah. I, I agree. I mean, I like the, I like it with the decorative fencing on top two.
Yeah. I mean, if, if we get into.
But I think we got to figure that out. That's, that's a cost piece probably.
Right. When we get into the actual, you know, a final design, if that's one of, some option that could be within the, the price point, I wouldn't be, you know, I would like to see that get put on there.
Well, my, my only thought that was a metal part is longevity. Is it?
Right. There's.
How easy is it to replace? You know, if it's something that is, what is the cost going to be to replace it? And.
And honestly, that, if it's, if code would be just the concrete, you know, standard wall that's there, if we decide in three or four years that we would like to dress it up a little bit and we have the funds to add on a, a decorative steel rail and bring it up another two foot, we could always do it after the fact.
Oh, they'd be cute with, um, streetlights, streetlights, the decorative, like decorative light lamp.
One on each end, just to highlight the bridge.
Flags or banners or something like that down there for the holidays.
But that can be a.
We might have some extra ones on, on Main Street. We could cut down to size.
A few.
You might hear that kids have bits off of their.
Really?
In the past.
By putting that high railing, you're taking that option away? Yeah. Good point.
You might hear that, so.
I'm actually thinking that cast style is what Swamp Road Bridge had.
Yes. I think so. It was just that steel low, you know, whatever code is, thirty-six, forty-two inches, whatever that, you know, whatever the new code is. I'm sure Swamp Road was pre the new codes.
Any other, what? Go ahead.
So, based on the conversation, I want to just make sure I've got my instructions correctly. It sounds like this is going to be a warrant article on the ATM.
Yeah.
So, I haven't drafted that yet. So, I will add that. And I'm drafting it, capital has recommended it as a borrowing authority. Am I drafting it as a borrowing authority?
Drafted as we, I would recommend. We drafted as we did the sewer, which was any and all, including borrowing.
Correct. Right. I'll borrow similar language for that.
Yeah. Okay.
Because I don't, maybe we're in a position to borrow from ourselves. Maybe we want to, maybe we don't. I don't know. Maybe we find grant money. Maybe someone finds us grant money. I saw something about federal improvement of infrastructure in roads today, but I don't know what that was. I'm reaching, I know.
But I'll, I'll draft it from that standpoint.
Okay.
Yep.
But I'm hearing three-sided frame, not arch, but the printed side for now as a, as a rail?
Yep.
Yes.
And any, anything in a different direction? Are we good with that? It sounds like this was quicker than I expected it to be. I think we're there.
Yeah.
I would circle back with the engineer, make sure there's no escalators that they would consider different at this stage. It's been a little while.
That's what I was just gonna ask.
Yeah, it's been a, come up on, you know.
Yeah. How good are we that this, this pricing is still accurate?
And there was one other question, but go ahead, that I had.
All right. So, I'll get to that information.
Yep.
So, when I was looking through the preliminary, you know, cost calculations, they had all the summaries that gave us the one four, one four four, one five. And then there was a three hundred and fifty-three nine. Was that incorporated in there somewhere? And I just didn't follow. Um, I don't know. Of our pocket, one forty-five. Of the bridge itself, I don't know. Right towards the end, after the cost estimates. Oh, never mind. It's in, it's in there. Oh, never mind, it's in, it's in there. Maybe that's not the one I was thinking of then. Hang on a second. Oh, maybe when I was looking at it last night, I wasn't following the math.
What page are you looking at again?
I, I was looking at the, um, estimated probable cost sheets, which are after the cut sheets and the drawings.
Scroll all the way to the bottom.
Yeah.
Scroll up.
Yeah, I gotcha. The three fifty.
So I had thought there was one in that set that wasn't in any of the proposals. And so I didn't know if that was additional engineering or some other cost that was missing in our numbers, but.
Oh, I've got.
As I'm going through it now, I'm not seeing it anymore.
Let's see, yeah, no, you got something, I just found it. Preliminary highway estimate.
It's in there.
It's the, the three fifty, three is the roadways piece of every estimate, right?
And then there's a, yeah.
And then the other three are the three bridge pieces of the, of the proposals. I think I just missed it when I was looking at it quickly.
Yep.
Yeah, that's how I would understand it that way.
What is, maybe it's this one, what is the five eighty-five?
That sounds like it's the actual bridge structure.
Yep, never mind, it is. And then it's included in the following proposal, okay.
And my only question is, that three fifty-three nine that they identify as highway, um, preliminary highway estimate, I don't see where it's actually called out as such on the proposal, so that would.
No, it is, if you go up to page, uh, one forty-two, it starts there, it gives you a summary.
She doesn't have those pages.
Oh, they don't have those.
I'm looking at the Weston and Sampson.
You don't have the whole packet, so if you scroll up, there's, um, three different. Yeah, it's like a double box. On the Weston and Sampson, uh, they're labeled nine point five on, on the bottom of their page. This would be their, yeah, go just below nine point five. And you'll see all the different, uh, the three fifty-three nine is worked into each.
Okay, yeah, oh, got it.
Total amount.
Okay, thank you.
I think what I missed is the three fifty-three is called out, then the bridge plus is called out. And then there's a breakdown of the three fifty-three and a breakdown of each bridge and then each plus.
Right.
To get you to the.
To get you there.
The components, and I, yeah, I just didn't follow, I thought there was one extra, but I'm all good now. So this is July twenty-one, I mean, we're almost a year forward, so is there any change in those numbers?
I'll call and ask.
Yeah.
And is there anything missing in here? Is there engineering, is there, or is that all calculated in? Is that already in what we've already contracted for? You know, um, what am I looking for? Bid and bid document, um, management and all of that, all the way through construction management? Or is it incorporated in their estimate? Does the engineering piece and management piece, it's always like carved out, just wanna make sure it's incorporated in our total?
I'll get you that answer.
Okay. And I guess we're ready for the article. You have it in the capital improvement plan, but I'm assuming you pull, we're gonna pull that out for the capital improvement article because it's not free cash or raised appropriate funded.
Right.
Or, yeah, okay.
Because we, we group each of those by funding source and then specifically this one, because it's a borrowing component, I have to put all the statutory language that must be included in that, that warrant article.
Just like you're pulling out the wastewater because they're funded from enterprise.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So other than getting an update on numbers, I think that's it.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I mean, the, the number should be okay because I'm looking at these again. Weston and Sampson has incorporated a twenty percent contingency on cost of material and then an additional ten percent contingency overall. So there's a lot.
A year ago sounded like overkill, but now we're going.
It might get us right there.
I will get you those answers.
I feel like we're back at the inflation, Scott. Okay, good enough on the bridge?
Yes.
Okay. That's the plan. Uh, so we'll give an updated number if needed and then draft the article.
Okay.
And we should consolidate this and ask, um, Weston and Sampson to come up with a, maybe a, um, abbreviated set of documents for, you know, dispersment and to show at the annual town meeting. And we have time for that, but to, to have, to explain the proposal, I don't want it to get confused with other versions we didn't pick.
We'll get that going.
Okay. It probably doesn't really impact, uh, our costs too much, I don't think, but while Fincom comes here, you wanna?
Just wondering if you're gonna do that.
Yeah, I am. Discussion regarding the future framework and management of the Eastern Franklin Health District. May or may not have any cost impact to the town, but since you're here.
Right. Um, so I just want to run it past the select board and obviously Fincom members. I, I am having a concern with the Eastern Franklin County Health District, um, the ability to manage. It's a, it's a board that's comprised of representation from the three towns that are members of the district. And they have, uh, two part-time employees. And so, uh, we had started to work on some policy adjustments and some other issues about two years ago. Um, then the pandemic happened and it was all hands on deck to get us through, um, all the intervening steps that had to take place to take care of, uh, normal operations. But now that things have started to calm back down, I'd like to revisit some of those concerns. And, um, with some recent changes in our Board of Health and the other Boards of Health, I thought it would make sense, after talking to everybody, to recommend that maybe we consider reshaping this district. Um, right now it's a standalone legal entity that we're members of. But as you know, that there's many different ways for municipalities to partner. One option may be for one of our towns to take the lead and form a, an intermunicipal agreement with the other two towns. And, uh, if everybody was amenable and we could form that agreement, um, they could transfer the assets and the employee to the lead town. And instead of the assessments, each town pays to the, um, the district. Instead, they pay that to the lead town. So to the chairman's point, it shouldn't change our costs at all. All the costs would be borne by the district. We already appropriate in the Board of Health budget for our portion of the assessment, so that would just get transferred. The one thing, if you were interested in having this conversation, um, and I wanted to sort of get the green light before I, I talk to the other towns, it would require setting up, I believe it would require setting up a revolving fund specifically to, to capture these costs and revenues. And then that way, whatever fund balance remains, it doesn't cash out to the general fund. Um, I assume the three towns would want to have some type of guidance structure, an oversight committee of some sort that would still do all of the policy direction for, for the service. You have a good service, I, I just want to protect it and strengthen it if we can. Um, and of the towns, I think Irving, maybe I'm biased, but I think Irving probably has the capacity, um, to do this. Um, I'm not sure if the other two are interested or have the capacity at this time. But I also haven't specifically asked them, I didn't want to do that without having to run it past you all first.
Just to add a little bit more, the district is Irving, Norfolk and Chutesbury.
Correct.
And when Brian says management, he's more referring day-to-day employee, um, you know, payroll, that sort of management.
Right.
Um, the district is attempting to do that with, you know, two part-time employees. Uh, so not, it's not an entity of its own that does that normally like a town does. So the, in terms of those things and keeping up with that regulation and, um, if you will, the ease of management and all of those things are better borne by a town probably than the district itself to ensure it stays current and compliant. Um, so it's more of that. The oversight, the Boards of Health have today, it would probably be a similar structure where the Boards of Health would be the oversight of the, of it still. Directional, annual, quarterly, you know, that kind of things, not in budgeting and things like that, not a day-to-day operation. So, yeah, just add. So I think Brian, you're just asking, are we, are we willing on potentially taking on that?
Correct.
That management piece as a town?
Right.
Assuming the financial burden comes from the district and doesn't really differ from what we're already all paying today.
Correct.
And then funnels through and eventually pays the people who are doing that extra work here in town. Would we be interested in proposing that to the other towns?
My take on this is, when I, when I first read it is, is, um, I, I don't mind having the discussion. I'm, I'm a little concerned about why Irving is always the lead town. And the other towns don't have any interest in, in, they don't mind joining it, but they don't want to do the work. And I don't know that we should always be stepping up to the plate to do the work. Because it takes, takes time from our people to, to manage something that, um, that, um, I think all the towns should have some managing ability to, to do. And, um, so that's my, my main concern is, is that, you know, do we really want to be the, we, every time, um, a town, they're looking for a town to step up to the plate.
That's fair. Uh, I'm sure this was not your only concern, obviously, but the district would pay us.
Yeah.
But I know that's not the only burden that that brings. And I wouldn't necessarily propose it's like-for-like, there may be a little additional cost. We offer a, a better service than the district has today. So I think that should be negotiable in that process if we do it. It, it may be auxiliary to this, but I, I was curious, how is the assessments calculated? It seemed there was a big skew.
Take them off from the grid?
Yeah.
I need to.
Between the three towns, because.
District formulates that.
The, the numbers seem to be odd.
I received that as a PDF.
Okay.
Or a printed copy that I then turned into a PDF, so that's, I don't have the underlying formula for it.
Okay. Yeah, that, the rate per.
Right.
District just seem, uh, what the basis is, I'd like to understand that.
And that's something that, to me, would be worked into the, the intermunicipal agreement. If, if all three towns were still interested in doing this and going forward, you would codify that understanding of what these formulas should be within that agreement. That's, that's an excellent question.
I share your sentiment. I'm glad you said it, it's a good point, I really am, I. I'll say I'm, I'm in support of having the conversation and seeing if they're interested.
Yes, I, I am as well.
But it's selfish, it's so, so to your question, why, I don't know, but selfishly, I think what we get from the district is better than we could get from other services, so I'd like to ensure it stays. And I think we, as a board and as a, you know, administration town, always try to, to administer and manage to the best of our ability, to the most modern and, and up-to-date and up-to-code and statute way. So inherently, I, I feel more comfortable when we have the ownership of them. It has a burden and, and I don't want to minimize that and I'm glad you brought that up. So selfishly, I think those are reasons why it's good for us to be a lead town. It doesn't mean we should always be the one taking on the burden though, so.
So I was, the, the thing I was gonna say is to answer your why, I, I think Irving financially, it puts us in a spot where we have the ability to have the appropriate staff, the staffing levels, the capacity to do it. And that's why we end up wanting to be the lead, you know, as a town, or at least, uh, are looking at it. But I do have the same sentiment of, do you have the capacity to take on yet another oversight role and still not diminish what you're currently overworked and doing as it is? Uh, you know, so I do have that same concern of just adding another piece to the pie of, you know, even if it's just a small, a small piece, it's just one more task that we're adding. Um, and I, I share that same sentiment, that, you know, it would be nice for another town to say, we also see the need that we're, you know, it needs to be managed a little bit differently and we are willing to step up. But having that conversation, maybe we'll get that. You know, may, maybe we'll have that. So engaging that conversation with the three towns, I think is worth it.
Yes, I agree.
She's not here any longer, but we did bring this up to the treasurer as well because actually some, probably a bulk of the burden would actually fall to the treasurer's office in terms of payroll, managing money. And that's the bulk of what probably needs to be done. So not to say there would be no burden on Ryan and the administration office, but I actually think it would fall more on our financial team. Because it's more of the money management and the people management than anything else. So, and it shouldn't seem to have a concern about taking on that additional piece. And that may be, where does those ten hours go, those extra hours go after this year?
Right.
It's not maybe funded from our budget, but.
Funded somewhere else, yeah.
Yeah, so, so anyway, because it's good, not gonna happen overnight, so. Any concerns or comments from Fincom on this? Okay, so.
It's okay to have a conversation?
Yes.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Okay. The, I believe the last item is, that we have is the review of the former graded school RFP submissions. You're welcome to stay joint or stay for it, um, but it's not really financial in nature in the term, in the discussion and decision of, what do we pick, because it doesn't have the proposed purchase price. That's excluded from this, this part of the discussion, so, um, I just, I'll for that as you can stay jointly and, or you can stay and listen. But whatever you would like to do and, and do you have anything else for us before we go into that?
Nothing else? Nope, we're good.
Do you want to adjourn the joint? You can stay if you like.
Sure.
Okay. Make a motion to adjourn the joint meeting with the finance committee and continue the select board meeting.
Okay.
At nine thirty-eight P M. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. We'll get to you in two weeks, here at seven. And plan to wrap the budget, hopefully. Okay. Brian, I believe if I'm correct, last but definitely not least, our first dive into the RFPs from the graded school. And we touched on this briefly last meeting, we got, um, two proposals. One from Lee Properties and one from Obera Construction. I mean, I can kind of give a really quick high-level overview of what they were, or we can just kind of dive into discussions around them, I don't know what.
I've, I've reviewed them, uh, I went through, so.
Yeah, I did.
I'll leave it up to you of how, how in-depth you want to get, or if you want to give just overarching thoughts.
Yeah, I'm gonna try to paraphrase them really quickly, if I miss something key, just let me know. Roughly, Lee Properties' proposal only considered the graded school property.
Right.
Proposed, uh, three units of, uh, three floors of affordable housing units that would fit in the sixty to one-twenty, um, median income ranges, which has a certain programming, uh, in terms of funding opportunities out there to support construction of those types of, um, housing apartment. Generally maintaining the, you know, the brick facade, bringing it up to date, things like that, energy efficiency improvements, green energy initiatives wrapped into that. But overall, it was eleven units. Some studio, some one-bedroom, some two-bedroom. And in terms of moving to the Obera Construction proposal, they provided a proposal for both the graded school and the, um, former library property, uh, if we would entertain that, which we said we'd hear it. It is separate, so we can call that out if we don't want to. The, uh, for ease, the former library property would be a remodel into a three-bedroom home, which would then be sold on the market if I followed their proposal. And then the former graded school would be converted into four market rate apartments. Uh, again, similarly maintaining, um, the overall, you know, brick exterior and, and look of the building, uh, energy efficiency improvements, et cetera. Uh, and looking to reduce the size of the parking lot and increase kind of the aesthetic and curb appeal in terms of aligning with the neighborhood with a smaller, smaller, I think it was a smaller curb cut, smaller paved, um, impervious area, things like that, that, to bring it down to a size appropriate for the number of units. I, I'm sure there's, there's a lot more in there, but that's, that's kind of the, the quick summary that I have for those watching. Did I miss anything key that either of you or Brian that you think was, was kind of a important point I missed? Okay, no? Thoughts from there? I know we were, um, just pulled out copies of our comparative evaluation criteria as well, you know, in terms of what checkbox is for us. So, um, maybe the only other key thing, and it's probably slightly apparent from the difference in units, but the, I believe the proposed, uh, the expected cost to do the renovations and changes were significantly more for Lee versus Obera. I think it was, uh, four times.
Yeah.
Roughly two. Roughly 2 million versus about half a million in terms of anticipated cost to do the project.
Yeah.
Does that, does that sound right?
Yeah, and I think that's driven by and large...
By the units.
Obera is keeping the internal structure, very similar to what it currently is. The layout and utilizing the current layout.
Right. Right. Thoughts, comments, questions, or things that, anything that wasn't clear, anything that...
I was, I was a little concerned about the, when it talked about permitting Obera, talked about historical society permits or looking for a tax abatement for historical building. And I don't know, I kind of feel like whenever I hear something like that, I, I kind of get my ears up and I, you know, I feel like, here we go again. Are we trying to do something that, that we don't want to do? Or is it just, they're just looking for ease and, and a tax base, abatement for the project?
It would be on the state level. Potentially federal, depending on what program. Certain structures can qualify if they, if they have a certain designation on a historical register. They can qualify for some of these state and federal programs. And, and some of those tax credits make it financially feasible. It becomes part of their funding formula. It has a lesser impact on the local municipality. We're not doing an abatement. So I, I do believe that that's something that they were looking at for this one. I don't know if the building would be able to be put on the register. That's something that I'm personally not directly experienced with. My knowledge is that that building is not currently officially on a register. So there would be a whole process to having to do that.
Did I miss that? You, you're saying the Obera proposal, I saw that?
I thought that was...
I thought I saw a lot of references in the Lee proposal.
Yeah, I was going to say, I thought both, I thought both.
Was it both? Okay, I just missed it then.
It may qual, I mean, it is over 100 years old. It very well may. And it's had very few alterations to it. The wheelchair left door is the only real modification that you've had to that building. And 100 years, so.
Well, that, and it takes time to do that process as well. So that's, that's, that just means more, the building sits there for a little bit longer.
It could, but they, they, those tools, again, I'm not well-versed in how, how long it takes to go through that motion. But some of those financing packages become the tipping point as to whether or not any developer can take on the work or not. And every developer has their own particular mix. So noting that both mentioned it, it sounds like they're both would be interested in, in pursuing that.
I mean, I don't know how far you want to get into it this evening.
I mean, I know we've, we've had a long meeting, but I mean...
I was just going to say, looking at the two, my first, without going through the full rubric, I didn't have the full rubric when I was reviewing both of them. I was just taking notes on a piece of paper. I, I was leaning heavily towards the Obera proposal as one that I would want to move forward with. Some of the factors where I, you know, when, when it comes to that building, I really liked the proposal of utilizing the, the interior structure the way it is instead of going with small efficiency. I've been in that basement. I'm not sure, I, that part of converting the basement into housing, I didn't like that proposal. That sort of threw me, put it on the, on a negative scale for me. I mean, the, the rest of the proposals, other than, you know, they all have the, the financial pieces, they all meet the, the checkboxes. So for me, it was really about aesthetics and, and what the interior layout would be and what they would be providing. I'm, I'm more partial to Obera's. I also like the fact that it's a local developer that is right across the river in Miller's Falls. That's their home base. That was a, a plus for me. And I know that's not on the criteria, but it's one of those things that, you know, stuck out to me.
I have to say, I, that was the, the main key that popped out for me as well is that they are local. And, you know, I, I felt like if, if we need to talk or have discussions and, and I can readily see their work throughout the, the county, that, that means a lot compared to someone who may be distance, great distance between us, so.
I just would say on top of that, I, and again, I'm not saying that, and I, I don't have the experience or knowledge, but looking at the number of apartments in the same footprint that's already there, it seemed like more than I would have envisioned being in that building.
The 11?
The 11?
Yeah.
Yeah, it just felt like a lot. And, and, and it automatically made me feel like they would be very small. And I'm not saying the neighborhood couldn't support the, the number of people that that would bring. I mean, it, you know, it parked for a school. But it doesn't necessarily fit in the neighborhood as much to me to potentially have an 11-unit building versus a four-unit building. So a piece of Obera's about kind of removing some of the impervious surface, making it feel a little more, a little, you know, a little more fitting in the neighborhood in terms of not having a, a large, what seems more like a public parking lot in, in the neighborhood. Just I think aesthetically might fit the neighborhood better. And to the local piece, the piece that, not only that it's local, we know that, we, we can see and know the work and the revitalization they're doing just over the river from, you know, in Miller's, which I think is great. They talked to, I believe, keeping that in their property portfolio and managing it directly. So you know who, and, and at least we have some sense, and I know we've talked about this with other properties, ensuring that we know the long-term engagement is there and it keeps it some, you know, the way we'd like. You know, they spoke to that a lot of, they're going to retain the property. They're going to manage it. They're also expecting to either supplement or, you know, current workforce or add workforce to manage the property, which means local jobs and, and those things.
Yeah, they even, they called out the FTEs and everything.
They did, not only for the construction project, but the permanent. And Lee speaks to, you know, they're going to sell it off and, and/or have it managed by someone else, right? They're not, they're not taking that on. And whether that's because it's not in their region or not their forte, you know, not, not judging that, but just we know a little bit more of where is it going to be down the road. Those are some key, you know, key pieces to it. I, I'm not saying the funding, I, I think they provided all the necessary information on how do they get to the numbers? How does it make economic sense? And that didn't raise any concerns. But I did think, and again, it's definitely the scale, the number of apartments, but the timelines were similar. They were both about a year and a half.
Yeah.
I, I just think the, the, I don't know, maybe I'm, maybe I'm being, maybe I'm not thinking about it correctly, but the idea that financial burden, one quarter of the, the size, it seems like it's just, has a higher success rate. Is it less likely for, you could look at that one way. You could either say there, there's a risk that there's things they didn't prepare for and it maybe is much more expensive. Or on the flip side, it's a, it doesn't take the same level of investment and burden to be successful. So is that, you know, I'm just, to your point, I, I want to make sure we see the, see that successful completion to whatever we choose and that, and that's important, right? So.
Maybe somebody can help me out with this. One of the questions I had, and I wasn't able to find it, is if you're looking at, in our packet, it would be page 35, 36 maybe, 35. It gives the breakdown for the rent rolls for the 11 units. And it talks about the studios, the one-bedroom and the two-bedrooms. Where are the, where are the three two-bedrooms?
I was going to...
Like that didn't matter.
I saw that in the beginning.
I went through their, you know, I went through their diagram several times thinking, okay, maybe they're talking about that bonus room and they're saying that could be, and if any of you have been in the graded school, that bonus room is, as you're going up the stairwell, there's actually an, an office door. Currently the Union 28, well, they used to be there.
Yeah.
That would be an office and they would be using that as the entry to the apartment. It would be a step up. And so I thought maybe that's where they were looking at the two-bedroom. If somebody can see where the two-bedrooms are, I'm...
So I'm there?
Yeah, please help me out. Because I was looking at their diagram saying, I, I don't see them. And I just wanted to make sure, you know...
I don't remember what page it says that there's the two bedrooms, but I remember seeing it. But if you look at their actual Appendix A, their pro forma, it only lists one bedroom. So I think that chart was a mistake, but they included a two-bedroom. Or they included multiple two-bedrooms. Because you're talking about the Obera proposal, right?
No.
No, no, Lee.
Talking about Lee.
Oh.
Lee.
The Lee proposal.
Which should be roughly the same page in the, well, no, there's separate proposals, but...
They are.
It's Exhibit 10 in the Lee proposal.
Yeah, I, I remember seeing the same discrepancy.
And, and everything they show in there is the, you've got the second floor, they're all one-bedrooms with the bedrooms in the back. The first floor, they're all one-bedrooms with the bedrooms in the back.
The, I will just say, in the proposal Level 2, they call out a bonus room office in two of the upper ones.
Right, and I said potentially, that could be...
They don't have closets though, they're not considered a bedroom.
Right, they have to be a bonus room office because of the, the through and through, the way it's designed.
It's not actually true. It's common use, it's not closets necessarily. I don't know the language, but at least in the, yeah, but you remember from our agent, I believe.
It is, they can call it a bedroom based on the probability of the use of the room. So a closet used to be a very standard, had to have closet as a bedroom. Now they can just simply look at the space and say, the probability is this will be used as a bedroom and it can now be defined as a bedroom. At least, that's what our realtor told us two years ago.
Thank you.
Still not an expert, just for the record. That's our opinion.
Given that that bonus room is the actual main entrance to the home.
Oh, I missed that.
I find it very hard that they would...
It's more of like a mudroom, probably.
It's a mudroom. It's a bonus room, mudroom office that you go through. So I just didn't see any studios and I didn't, I mean, you could consider the...
Studios?
The basement.
Two bedrooms.
No, I mean, I didn't see...
Oh, studios either?
So in their rent rolls, they talk about...
Autumn would be the studios.
The basement, I mean, you could consider those...
I think because they don't have doors.
It's a half-wall, right?
It's a half-wall, so you, you know.
Those are studios, I think, but the count doesn't match, does it?
No, it's four half-walls, it's four studios. So I, I found a lot of discrepancies in that. And it just seemed to me a very large conglomerate that's put together a proposal and some of it was pieced together quickly. And I just didn't, I wasn't pleased with reading through it, all in all, so.
There was another discrepancy that, that didn't add up for me at one point. And I didn't go back through it a second time and I will, but the solar. They talked about offsetting the electricity costs for four units. And then later, say there's no electricity cost for the whole program.
Right.
But I do have four to 11.
You have 11.
The math isn't working for me.
Your production has to be much higher.
Yeah.
And I don't think that's likely, that, that, that roof space isn't that low.
I was thinking about the library and, I mean, I know that, that they're not the same building, but we see how much we're paying for electricity even with that giant array there. And you also can't control the costs of tenants' electricity, which, I mean, you can, you can base it off numbers. You can have an idea.
There's estimators, but...
Yeah, but like, to say that you're going to have zero electrical cost, to me, does not seem accurate.
No, no.
And not when you're using them for, if it was stray electricity, that's fine. But using them for mini split heat in 11 units? I'm not buying it when we can't. I mean, the library footage is more, but still.
Yeah. So just for all of those reasons, when I was going through them, everything leaned me towards the Obera proposal. If we're going to move forward with anything, that would be the one. Now, whether or not we want to move forward with that one, we want to scrutinize that one and make sure that one is the best fit for the town, then we can still, you know, we have that due diligence to do it. I'm not saying I've, I've gone through and checked all the boxes to make sure it fits every need that the town has.
Agreed, agreed.
Yeah.
I feel the same way on the first, first review through. I feel the same way. I do want to go through the comparative criteria.
Yeah.
Up against it, but the discrepancies do concern me. And there's just that level of attention versus local versus not that, you know, I think that we may see in the final product.
So I, I, I suppose we, we actually do need to do this process?
We do?
Yes.
We absolutely do, yes.
Yeah, we can't just base it on... We have to go through it.
Right, yeah, no, we do, we do need to go through it. So that's why I did call that out.
Is that something we're going to do collectively? Or are we going to sit down individually and work our way through it? And then bring it back?
My suggestion was going to be, and we use this for other stuff that we do in Town Hall, is that because you each have one, you could go through your own, at your own pace, at your time, go through and rank or, or identify where you think the proposal is landing for you on the comparative criteria. And then for your next meeting, have a summary from each of you as to where you, where you landed during your review. Or if there's further discrepancies that you're concerned about, bring those to that larger conversation.
Yeah, so, and unless you all feel differently, I think that'd be a good direction to do. So taking through each one of these and, and kind of jotting down where did they land within the zero to five? And if there's any specific call-out, my recommendation is, is there any specific call-outs that made it that way for you? Because that, that'll be good for our dialogue. Because I think then we comparatively go through, you know, what was our total score for each and then why, you know, what are the drivers? And then come to a directional decision on which one was most advantageous. And then the question of, do we want to proceed? And if it is Obera, do we want to consider the library, which is not part of this comparative criteria valuation? I think to compare the two, we should not consider it as part of the overall valuation, but I guess it's up to...
So if I remember the way that the three of you approached it, because you offered up the library through addenda. So you'd already issued the comparative criteria and you were, I believe, very clear that the library may be considered or it may not be considered. And you reserved the sole choice. And so the proposals came in with the understanding that you may separate the two things out. So with, and I know that I have two sealed price proposals. I haven't looked at either one of them, so I have no clue what's being offered for either, either building. So I think what you could choose to do is use the grading rubric for the graded school proposal and then the library proposal to choose whether or not you think it's the most advantageous. You only got one on the library building. So it's not like you have another project to compare it against. But I think your decision as to whether or not you want to sell it or not is, is very much a, a decision the three of you need to, to weigh. And maybe going through some of the comparative criteria will help you arrive at that decision if you're ready to sell it or not. At the STM, you were granted the, the authority to dispose of the property. So, so we're ready if, if you are.
I guess my question, and I don't have the right answer, was, do we evaluate the two, excluding the library? Do we evaluate them in whole against each other with one not having it and one having it?
And I don't. Yes. That's the answer.
Perfect, thank you. And at some point, when we come to that, we're either then deciding whether the library is part of the project or not, if that's the, the advantageous proposal.
Right.
And how are we moving forward if we are, right?
Right.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm wondering, in this business suggestion, but, or an offer, I guess, if, if it's easier for you all to separately do your grading rubrics and send them to myself, I'm happy to kind of assemble them on kind of a table of, here's how you all voted and kind of, so that it's easy to compare so that at the meeting, you're not trying to say like, well, I wrote this and I had this. And I could kind of have that assembled for you at your next meeting if that's of use.
I, I don't have a preference. Which reminds me of what we've done in some of the screening sometimes in the higher-level positions. So it's not, I mean, there's not a ton of...
No.
There's not actually a ton of sections. There's a kind of bullets that drive the, the decision, but there's, there's only, what, five? Five metrics?
Yep.
I, I don't know, I don't have a preference either way.
I appreciate the offer, but I think we'll be... I don't mind just bringing my...
I think that's the dialogue. Not that that's not what you would provide, but I think the dialogue about the why, if we vary, is the important part of the...
Correct.
The deliberation. I mean, if we all came through with fives on the same, the same proposal, I mean, I, I think it would be to note a few things of why that was the... proposal, I mean, I think it would be to note a few things of why that was the high, you know, selection, and then that's that. We're kind of unanimous there, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So-
Back on the agenda for the 28th.
Right. We'll come up with our grading for each, and then-
Yep.
Compare notes. And then-
We'll see.
If we come to consensus that night, from there, talk about path forward.
Yep.
Excellent.
Okay.
Exciting.
Anything else for tonight? Okay, thank you all for the long haul. Thank you, everyone. Make a motion to adjourn at 10:03 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.